Yeah.
Yep.
I can tell.
It is eight o'clock. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a clear routine justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion. We have a lot of public in here today. Mr. Casey.
I got a couple of questions for you. First one, I would like your response back from each one. This was on record, if you would, please. Have any of you, because if you have, I don't think you should be able to vote on this. Any of you invested in this company, CO2 line, or take donations? A meal, coffee?
No.
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 Alright. My second question directly goes to Mr. Stecker. Monday night after the board adjustment meeting, you got a call from a lady concerned citizen wanting to know how you were going to, if you would back us people on the pipeline, which us people are what voted you guys in. You work for us. And your answer to her was you give me half, give me a petition with half county's votes, seventy-five hundred signatures on it, and I will think about going that way. I will think about it. Did you say that? And why did you say that?
So, that's not exactly a direct quote, and that's a very small portion of a conversation. I clarified the suggestion of if a petition is brought around, what would it take? I said, I would not count signatures from someone in Des Moines or halfway around the world. If it was Cassuth County citizens, that would be one thing. But that is, that is correct numbers, because that would be half of the county. But that's a very small piece of the conversation.
I say, when I was on that board, I never asked for any signatures. And ten of those people came to me and said, we want your help. Let's go. What do you hire me for? Let's go. So to me, it's like, you're, why do you need seventy-five hundred? That don't make sense to me. You don't need any signatures to back your people. Yeah, granted, your line up there isn't as big as the line down here. Mr. Whacker and Mr. Nap get the big line. To me, that don't make sense. To me, it sounds like you made up your mind very long time ago. That's why I asked that first question. Basically, have you been paid off for nothing?
No.
Alright, all I got.
Well, I'll jump in, because I was that lady. So, since I was that lady.
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm Stacy Bash.
Yep.
Yeah. Stacy Bash, I reside here in Algonah. So, yeah, I was the lady that called up Kyle and just wanted to have some education on, I know of a lot of people who are highly against us, right? A lot of farmers, a lot of people. Obviously, a lot of people that are here are speaking for them. But when I asked Kyle, when I asked you about this, I'm gonna be honest, I feel too. And of course, it's easy to lie and say that, no, I didn't get any money under the table. I personally feel that somebody has given you money under the table because of your stance. I just felt it was very demeaning about the conversation. I know that you think that there's all these people. I think the numbers are skewed on what percent of the people have said that they wanted to do this or signed contracts according to you is what you said. But truly, when I asked you, what is it going to take? Because you guys do work for the people. You're in charge of our lives, our safety, and our requests is what you guys are in charge of. We vote you in to speak for we, the people. So when I asked you what that was going to take, you said if I had half of the county's signatures on a petition, then that you would think twice about it. But it was just a thinking thing. And again, I'm working on this. It's not about thinking. It's like, wow, if even all these people in the room came to you and said that, Kyle, you are here for the people. So you guys are servants of the people who we vote in. We rely on you. We trust you. So Josh, you have Algonah. Your role is not to do whatever, you know, the alumni of the supervisors to push you into certain votes. I mean, Josh, you have a good mind. You got voted in. You have to speak for the town of Algonah. We have many people here who live in this community who are very concerned about what's going to happen. I applaud the judges who are now finally bringing up the Constitution. So now, we're finally getting back to what our founding fathers initiated, is that our Constitution gives us the rights. They do not have the rights to start taking away our land and start to take away some of our freedoms that were initiated to us. You must uphold our Constitution as well, not just the judges. So that's what I had to say today. So, thank you.
If I don't see anyone else, we will have some information from our road foreman.
Do I approve the agenda?
Oh, yes. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by?
I'll second.
Whacker, any discussion on the agenda in minutes? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Now we'll talk about it with the road foreman.
I don't know if you have any specific questions for the road foreman or not, but one thing I will be discussing during the discussion with county engineer is for ten-hour working days for the secondary road department. And discussing with the road foreman last week at our meeting, the road foreman, shop foreman, we believe that the time is near where we can start working that way. So if the board has any questions to the road foreman about road conditions or anything, this would probably be appropriate time to ask them. Otherwise, we can discuss it during my discussion time.
Trunk Hill get ahold of you about loaded dirt?
Me?
Yeah. Oh, he's gonna, I told him to call you and see if you could bring him a load for a tile hole up in German.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard anything from him yet.
He's gonna get ahold of you.
Okay.
Probably a day or something.
Drainage district repair?
Yeah.
Do you know what drain or anything like that?
There's a request.
We try to make sure that our road foreman.
Yeah, request made out. I'll get you the drain.
Was it Trunk Hill or was it?
Yeah, do one.
Is he the one repairing it?
What's that?
Is it Trunk Hill who made the request or?
No, I did.
You did, okay.
Yeah. Brad's actually the one fixing it.
Brad, Trunk Hill, probably.
Yeah. You aren't gonna do it till it dries up.
How much rain did you guys get up there last night?
That's interesting.
You guys been out on the roads yet? See if there's any washout, storm damage, anything like that?
Haven't, guys are just starting to get out right now. I haven't heard anything from us. So that's a good sign.
Yeah, I'd be very surprised if there's any, any damage, I guess. We had one, one issue where a piece of equipment was drug down a road and caused damage, but I don't think storms have any damage or, you know, I'd be very surprised if there was any damage.
Bill, I left you a voicemail this morning. I saw a stop sign down on my way into town here this morning. It was two miles west of Bancroft by the airport, north side of the road.
Oh, okay, okay. We appreciate those coming to our office. We write up work orders for the sign crew. So Bill's gonna go now to our office. And when those, when you, sometimes the facts change in the middle of through two or three conversations. So if you can call our office, we appreciate it.
Four-way bridge is getting funky again.
Yeah, well, now we got a little moisture when we get on it. It gets so hard and just don't wanna let it stay there.
It's gonna be hard to hold. The trucks turn there and.
Yep.
Anything else for the road foreman? Thank you, guys.
Alright, guys.
Thanks.
So everybody had a chance to go through the handwritten claims on your computer? Do I have a motion to approve the handwritten claims? Motion by Plank?
Second.
Second by Carter. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. What report show that, records show that we acknowledge that transfers made by the auditor, fourteen thousand one hundred and fourteen from general basic to secondary road and a hundred and eight thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents from rural basic to secondary roads. If there's no question, it will go in the record. Next on the agenda, approve the liquor license for rebate of Iowa, INC. I would move to approve. Second by Plank. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Next, approve the Cassuth County courthouse annex lease for early childhood development.
Is this the yearly lease? At least I think this is the yearly lease.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred dollars. I'll second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. You wanna call Doug? Thank you.
Hey Lisa, this is the boardroom. We are ready. Doug's just walking in. Yep, thanks.
Morning, morning. We are up to zoning ordinance for, have this liquid pipeline that's going to try and cross Cassuth County. We are up to a motion to approve the zoning ordinance that has been presented to us by the zoning board. Doug?
No.
No, we're just having a discussion.
Okay, I got motion.
Discussion.
I'll cross off the motion. Go to discussion. Doug, discussion, have you heard any comments?
I guess the planning and zoning commission presented a report to the board of supervisors. So that's kind of where, where, that the planning and zoning commission has completed their work.
Okay.
Probably take about three, two months to get it all done.
Well, the board of supervisors need to now do your process, which is either accept, change, deny what the planning and zoning commission's report was. So it's, the board of supervisors now need to act on what they would like the ordinance to, how they think it should read.
So I guess I'll start off since there was comments made in regards to conversations I've had here earlier already. I, I do have a portion of an opinion form on this already. I think it would be irresponsible if someone on this board didn't in any form at this point, considering we've been talking about it for months. One of my concerns in the ordinance as it was written, hazardous liquid is defined the same as Iowa code four seventy-nine B point two, unless otherwise defined there, which means crude oil, refined petroleum products, liquefied petroleum gases, and hydro ammonia, liquid fertilizers, liquefied carbon dioxide, alkanols, and coal slurries, which is on page A eight of appendix A. If you look at the Iowa Utilities Board map of pipelines in Iowa, we have nine of our communities in this county that have a pipeline either in their city limits or very close to their city limits that would fall under that category. That does not have a two-mile setback on any of those or two and a half mile as it was originally proposed. I have significant concerns about this ordinance for multiple reasons, but that would be the first one I would start with. But I have done a significant amount of research into this. I've looked at a lot of things that have been discussed in and outside this boardroom. And I, I never shared any specifics as far as X number, percentage of landowners or individuals have signed agreements or have invested. But I have definitely heard from both sides of the equation on this story. And there's no way around that. That's just a fact of life. So.
Your concern would be based on future development of other pipeline industry within the county beyond Carson.
Future development and previous infrastructure that's already in place would not comply with this.
I believe that would be grandfathered in, wouldn't it?
It would, this would not affect that current infrastructure, but if you applied it to it, it would not conform.
What you're saying is if there's a oil line or a natural gas line or something that in the future would want to come within two and a half miles of Lakota, that would, that's what you would.
It would not be a possibility.
Okay, okay.
You'd have to give a variance to the ordinance.
And the board of adjustment can give a variance to that.
Right.
Yes.
Right, correct?
Yep.
If the project was necessary, yeah.
It's, it's my understanding that the reason we have to get it done this quickly is if we want to go before the utilities board and file a grievance with them and to be in on the public discussion.
Uh, no, that would be part of the intervention process.
That would have started back in December.
Right. But isn't the hearings, if you want to get involved in the hearings, you have to have this done?
Not the ordinance. That's, that's the intervention with IUV, which we are on for Summit.
For Summit.
Yep. So they're two separate issues.
Right, we have discussions. We have a timeline.
Right.
Get this done. We need to have, get it done.
If we're gonna move forward, it'd be better to do it sooner or later.
We have to deal with this whole session.
Right. Yeah, and we all have to be cognizant of that.
But I think we, I mean, we talked about it, that we feel like we should move forward with it. So I think we need to take the next step to.
Roger, do you want to share your research about attorney fees?
Well, it was brought up that ICAP would pay eighty-five percent. Well, that's not for sure.
That's very much not for sure.
Yeah. So, if you move forward to this, you're going to have six-digit attorney fees. Are you gonna pay for it?
And if I understand correctly, even a couple of the counties who have had ICAP cover, insurance that they're supposed to six-digit attorney fees even with that.
Right. We have no process other than to tax. And with our current budget, we didn't allow six figure attorney fees.
That would have to come in the form of an amendment if we want that around.
You'd have to find some way to tax the people. Where are you gonna put it under?
Right.
With the current law, you know, going into effect, we're gonna be over the three dollars and fifty cents on general basics, so where would we get taxed?
We got two million dollars we need to.
That's, that's my concern. Where are you gonna find the money to pay for the attorney fees?
And I don't know if you guys have gotten to your email yet, but.
Yep.
The email from Summit with quotes from the transcript from Shelby County has some very concerning language in there.
Yeah, yeah, I read it. You can hear it too. That's.
I would say from experience that when a judge says something like that in court, in comments, their ruling will probably not be too far off of that.
I'm, I'm opposed to Summit coming through the county, but I'm also opposed to spending a hundred thousand dollars or ten thousand, twenty thousand, and thirty thousand on attorney fees out of the county budget that we don't have. So I'm opposed to two things.
And I mean, to repeat for the record, I'm very opposed to eminent domain. I don't know if anyone wants to go back in the record to look at who brought that up and how it was brought up, but we sent a letter to the Iowa Utilities Board opposing eminent domain very early on, months ago. I only remember how many months ago. But I think, I think a lot of this is above our pay grade to some extent. It's, it's much higher regulations than what we deal with. I don't, I don't have scientists at my disposal to tell me what's gonna happen if or when an event happens with a pipeline of this magnitude. I, I don't know how we could even begin to put numbers on something that we don't have any way to justify. I think that was some of the comments you had shared from Dr. Van Taggart with the Board of Health as far as number. There was not science to back up a specific number, and I would have to fall in line with that.
Yes, the other comment, we have a case in Bremer County and in Shelby County in court right now.
Yep.
However, those two cases are decided are gonna decide the rest of the cases.
Yep.
So do we actually have to spend the money in Cassuth County to go to court when those two are already doing it? That's a question I, I'll ask anybody for an opinion.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're talking about. It's the fact that we could have settled the sightline and see what happens with the other two or three counties that are already, that are in court.
Right. In, in some ways, I think we'd be prudent for us to wait until those two cases are settled instead of spending any money.
If, if those two cases are successful, I would feel much more comfortable about going forward with something like this.
Well, it would, it would.
It, it would set precedent, plain and simple.
I mean, I'd be really comfortable going ahead and doing it.
It's just a matter of how many months is it gonna be before one of them settles?
Don't know.
Nobody knows.
Nope.
So then are you waiting to a point where you should, you should have something in place or not?
And the other, the other thing is, is they can't go forward without landowner, landowner participation.
It can.
Yes, it can with eminent domain.
Yeah, but I'm saying with them, but if eminent domain does not happen.
Correct.
It can't.
Right. Then it's not happening.
Right. And so there's, there's another issue. And, you know.
And, and.
We don't think that there's, there's enough landowner participation, you know, to move forward without an eminent domain. If the state goes forward with eminent domain, I would not feel too comfortable being the state legislator at the state capital. And so.
Well, they dropped it because they didn't want to take hold of it at the state capital.
It, it did, it got through the House. It did not even get brought up for discussion in the Senate. So.
So that's a year away. Unless I, unless the Utilities Board can, can pass, so they can use eminent domain if they can get their board to pass it.
Correct.
By the Utilities Board, outside authority. And that's plain and simple. It's out of our control.
Well, the whole thing is, we have no control whether those passes or not. It's terrible to the state and the landowners.
The, the two main things we have control over are drainage district crossings and secondary road crossings. And I've not heard anyone argue those two points.
Yeah, that is a problem. Try to come up with a hundred thousand dollars potentially in lawyer fees.
Well, that's what it is. The rate is, you know, we gotta.
We have no, we have no way to.
And the other, the other point of discussion with the timeline is if, if our ordinance was fully enacted today, whatever. whatever time we would get sued hypothetically by each company, whatever, but if our ordinance was enacted today, we would be behind those two in the court schedule no matter what. So we're going to get decisions on those two cases before we would ever get a decision on ours, no matter what. So it would still follow precedent of those other situations, it just.
We'd be in the same court, so it's not a problem.
Yeah, and.
We're in the same.
Well, we.
Um, but, but either way, we're behind them on the timeline.
Correct.
So I don't feel it's appropriate to pour our money in the exact same path they're pouring their money right now. Um, especially with a lot of other factors around it um.
I think it's the same idea as the, you know, intervening with Summit versus Navigator, that Summit is
Yep.
Steps ahead in the process, and so how that outcome looked
Exactly.
Is gonna be how the other pipeline looked, as far as the intervention process.
Whatever, whatever Summit gets, Navigator.
I, I guess I can see your point there.
So I think, I think the public opinion is, I think it's obvious, at least, most of us on this board are opposed to of this happening. Uh, but we also have to be careful how we spend taxpayer money. And the potential for a hundred thousand or more dollars in taxpayer money is a serious, serious, serious number to contemplate. And we have no other way but to pass it on to the taxpayers. We really don't have, next year if the state's already enacted, you know, we have to, we have to cut two million dollars out of our budget next year.
Well, on Jack, on top of that, the, one of the quotes from the transcript was the judge asking if Shelby County had the ability to pay hundreds of millions of dollars in damages if they find a cause of action. I don't think we, this county can pay hundreds of millions of dollars in damages to a pipeline company because of an ordinance we enact.
Yeah, but they must be a little nervous that it wouldn't be threatening.
Oh, being.
But that's the judge.
Yeah, I know, but then the, the judge shouldn't really be threatening.
Actually, we brought up, I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of a, a threat, yeah, that.
Yeah, that's just a threat. I think we're between a rock and a hard place.
I think, I think we, we need to tread cautiously and uh you know, we still have time to enact this ordinance if we, if we, if we need to. Maybe need to just wait a little bit longer to see how these court cases come out.
My question is, can we take steps to get there but not fully sign it? You know, so if we, you know, take the necessary steps to do the, the readings and everything, but pause at that point where, you know, just before we can sign it. And then that way, you know, if it comes down, the, it's successful for, you know, Bremer County. We've already taken care of that, those public readings, the, you know, the.
You're kinda saying doing, doing everything except.
Except for final approval, and then we can kinda pause at that point. And then once we get word that, you know, Bremer County is successful, then, then we can go ahead and sign it.
There's a timeline between when you have to have the postings and when you have to have.
That's, that is my question.
Once you start, you don't quit.
Yeah, there's a timeline that you have to follow.
Sure.
Good question.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question.
Well, I I don't think we need to, you know, take a little more time and hopefully let these, the court pieces see how far they go, and we still have some, we still have time to enact this if we, if we, you know, feel like we have to. But uh, yeah, we've got to try and ride the N R S.
Well, I'm disappointed that the state didn't take it up.
Well, I am too.
I mean, really, the, the place this belongs, that state, not at the county level, because every county can have a different opinion. I mean, this is ridiculous.
It's not a public utility.
It is, it, it should, it should've never been discussion for us.
Eminent on a private, a private uh business, it's just uncomfortable.
Yeah, I would fully agree with all that, it should've, it should've been a conversation in Des Moines.
Yeah, it should've never, never come to this, to the county level because we don't have the power to do things that the state does.
And e- and even, even on the process side of things, when, when they look at doing a bill, they have access to they can do study bills and I don't know all the details behind it, but they can get they can get teams of people to get research and do, do um information gathering for them that they can look at a summary and make a decision off of that rather than spending forty or eighty hours a week trying to dig through this, that and everything else. We, we have nothing that's even comparable to that, we hire attorneys and professionals and everything else and uh, it, it should've, it should never be a conversation here, as far as I'm concerned, and and I don't think it's really a conversation here either way with the stuff that's on books, I mean federal and state levels already have stuff for this, whether you look at FEMSO or I U B or any of that. I, it, it's never been in our wheelhouse before and I don't think it should be in our wheelhouse now.
I think one of the things that we can take away from this whole situation is you need to contact the state representatives and start asking them why they didn't take this on. Uh, you need to get them on the phone, email.
Yep.
And, and I will say, Henry Stone has been very um vocal, he represents the majority of this county in the House side of things.
There's a big up over there.
He has been pushing for ninety percent for eminent domain. Um, which, if I was in his position, I would do the same thing. Um, but it got to the Senate side and I believe it didn't make it out of committee.
No, it never made it out of committee, it could, the, the chairman of the committee dropped it.
Yep.
Are they still coming up here on those Saturdays once a month and are they still coming up?
That was, that was just twice, I think that's done.
Oh, they have.
I'm pretty sure that's done for the session.
That was just for, you know, prior to the funnel, the, yeah.
Senator Guff was against it, he was in favor of the ninety percent.
Yeah, and I, I mean, in my conversations with Rowley, I would say he's probably in a similar opinion than most of us, I'm not gonna speak on his behalf, but I don't think beating down his door is gonna be successful for any of us, but um, it's definitely a conversation with the people on the Senate that dropped it, specifically the chairman, but
Yeah, and Houston, Polk County, wasn't it?
I don't remember, um, but sometimes that's what it takes, is going to the Capitol and talking to people that aren't our representatives and they, they have to represent their district and the whole state in that regard too, but.
I would say, don't leave out the governor's office either.
No.
For us. Contact the governor's office and, and because the ball can roll back from that way too, if she hears from enough people. You know, she can go back and, and figure out what happened too. Nevertheless, uh, the state dropped the ball and here we are and, and deciding how to move forward and our our number one thing is, is the safety of our people, and there's no question about that. Um, we also need to be fiscally responsible in doing so, and while we, there is some wiggle room in cases of, of protecting the safety of residents. It is, it is a hard, hard thing on what to do, how to move forward and um, I guess I'm not opposed to I'm not opposed to the idea of waiting until Bremer County or Shelby County would have a, a ruling. My concern is just that I think it would be good to have something in place. Even, even I'm here worried, discuss the ordinance soon, you know, even if it looked a little bit different and as far as how we go about moving forward, but but uh, I, I just think it's important to at least have something in place rather than wait for the last minute and rush, 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 we gotta get something done and you know what I'm saying, I guess.
Well, so you're suggesting that we change the setbacks on the ordinance today?
And I understand setbacks is about, you know, the biggest concern of either side, you know, whether our, our side for regulation and also from the company's standpoint is um, how that affects them. Is that a conversation we wanna have? Or is that a general feeling of the board that we want to table it, I, for lack of a better term, until?
Problem with that is we, you know, the N Rs, you know, we have setbacks for hog confinements. And this is a thousand times more dangerous than any hog confinement. So we're saying, so you're saying we can set this closer to, to somebody's house?
Well, I wasn't saying that.
Um, well, we changed the setbacks.
Correct, correct.
But, you know, we have setbacks in hog confines and uh, they're not nearly as dangerous as something like this if there's, you know, landline breaks.
But I mean, even on, even on that point, I would compare it to what I just said before, at the state level, they have access to experts and research and all that stuff to put, put into coming up with those numbers, I mean there's a multitude of reasons why this is different than a hog building, but I don't think transitioning a number from one topic to another is doing our due diligence for either side. I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying this is, this is the number that's appropriate, good or bad, plus or minus. I, I don't, I don't feel that's something that I'm comfortable with either way, and that's that's also one thing I struggle with the ordinance, I don't, I don't know how that would be justified whether let's.
Where it was, it was a conversation somewhere.
Well, I mean, I was, I was, I was at planning and zoning hearing when, when it was discussed, so.
The pipelines know what the safe distances are, but they're not, they're not willing to release that.
Well, I don't think there is a safe distance, Jack.
Well, I don't.
Depends upon the wind, it depends upon the weather.
Numbers out there, but nobody's willing to share.
Well, that's because there's too many variables, you can't really give a number. I get, my problem is I don't want the darn thing, no, no way. But how, how do we get there, that's my problem.
But I don't, I don't think we can enact something just to cut it off, especially on a topic that's this wide, when you look at the definition of a hazardous pipeline.
Yep.
All the current infrastructure we have, I, I don't think we can just say, no, we're not gonna do this, I, I don't think that's legal.
That's what we're doing by giving you two and a half mile setback.
And that's why they're challenging it in court everywhere.
So what are we saying, no pipeline, aren't we?
You can say that and.
That's the way I take it, I'm just saying, I don't want the darn thing, so we give you a two and a half mile setback and then we have to challenge it in court, yeah, go ahead.
So I guess a couple of comments, I want you guys, and don't reply to it, I want you to ask yourself, what a life's worth? And then um, I want you to consider, I'm gonna pick on Dana, if you uh live where he lives and it's gonna be two hundred feet from your house. Um, and then you talk about litigation being in a hundred thousand dollar range. You're basing that off of something's unknown, so they can tell you that they're gonna sue you, but if Bremer County or Shelby County wins their court case, chances are yours is done, they're gonna drop it. Um, and a hundred thousand dollars to me, I'm not sure on this, but I think one department head in, in the county got a thirty thousand dollar raise this year. So I think as a board, you guys are all intelligent enough to come up with that money to support a large portion of your constituents. Just think about that.
Can I make a comment, Roger?
Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
Something I said earlier about uh, this has precedent for future pipelines coming through, like if a gas pipeline wants to come through. A gas pipeline is a resource of people, this is a investment pipeline. So to me, there's a big difference between a natural gas line coming by out going on, or this. One is an investment, one is for, we need it, LP, we need that stuff.
So how would you separate, how is that defined in this proposed ordinance?
This is a private pipeline.
That's not defined in this ordinance.
You, you'd have to give a variance to anybody that.
But it's, but it's not separated that way.
No, I, I don't know how you can separate it.
And another thing, I get a lot of calls, I talk to Matt a lot, I hear a lot of stuff that he hears and he's on the phone all the time. With the money situation, there's a lot of people mad that you can't spend ten thousand dollar lawyer fee. To, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar lawyer bill, but you can send a supervisor to Washington DC for four or five thousand dollars and we get nothing out of that, the county got absolutely nothing, I've heard that many, many times. That's in these people's heads and it's in their craw. So just think about that one, and when you spent that money, you had to amend the budget because the money wasn't there. So why can't you amend the budget again and give us money to run the pipeline? Just throwing that out there, 'cause I hear, I can certainly hear a lot of people.
I, I don't disagree with you, Casey, the problem is we haven't got the place to amend the budget. We haven't got a category to pay the attorney fees unless we go back and redo the budget all over again almost. We have no bucket.
We have a bucket.
Do, which bucket?
We have a line.
We have a line for it, yeah.
We do.
Yeah, so.
Can I just say, Roger, can I just say something real quick? Many of us have contacted the governor and our legislators, so don't think that we haven't gone to the state level, we have done numerous amounts with that. All over the state, they are wanting us to go to the grassroots, get back to our counties. I know you're probably thinking the state's trying to pass the buck back to the counties, you guys as a county are trying to pass the buck back to the state. But it does come back to, to our county, you do have the right to say yes or no to an ordinance. And really, counties like Shelby, they're looking for other counties to back them up. The more counties that say, stop this and say no to this, there's power in numbers, correct? So why are we just letting Shelby, oh, you just hang out there on your own and we might, we might sign an ordinance if you win your case? What does that say to, to them, those Shelby County residents, what Cassuth County residents, we're, we're too scared? Or are we willing to back them up? So we have reached out to numerous people, so don't think that we haven't, and we are reaching out to you because we were told by them to come back to you. So that's why we're here today, there's no reason, I agree with them, what, what value are you gonna place on life and what value are you placing on these farmers' lands? They're gonna lose way more, if you add up everybody's land, that's way more than what a lawyer's fee is gonna be. So I don't think we're gonna have a problem figuring out where this, so what if you have to go back to the budget? You are protecting the lives and you're speaking for the people.
So you're saying our state representatives are telling you to come to the counties? Our local legislators? And that's in writing?
They just told you.
Phone calls?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So a comment to what Stacy said, I personally have amended the Capitol building and have made numerous attempts to talk to other legislators down there and the governor. And there's people in this room that I seen down there when I was there and there's people that aren't present today that are there, so we have made great attempts to be down there and like Stacy just said, we were sent home to talk to you guys, that's why we're here.
Yeah, that was kind of a chicken way for them to handle it too, though, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, they dumped it.
Correct, I don't agree with what they, but here we are, I don't agree with what they did down there and I don't agree with that they sent us back to you guys. But the problem is, that's why we're here today.
Yeah.
So just so you know, we have been personally in the Capitol building for a year and a half on this thing before we came back to you guys.
And I appreciate you guys involving and working on it.
Go ahead, state your name first.
Yes, I'm Rich Field, um, something's kind of interesting, this came out in North Dakota, Jimmy Powell of Summit uh was talking about uh, um, Bloomberg and they did not wanna release it because of the terrorist threat. And I got to thinking, wow, he was admitting that, uh, these pipelines are a terrorist threat. And it wouldn't be very hard to go out and like or be over somebody else and dig down and, um, put bomb there with it and to unite that. And so, as we talk about homeland security, I'm throwing this out because I don't think I've heard this discussed, but he, he himself said this is dangerous. We can't let these studies come out, even though Nancy here, um, was able to do it, I guess, on her own. So, it wouldn't be too hard for terrorists to figure that out. So, as we talk about these things, uh, that would take James Bond to figure out it can be done in multiple places at multiple times. Our hospitals are far, uh, Goldfield, these communities are very, very close. So, as we kind of think things through a little bit, where is our homeland security? Where is our security when he's pointing it out that this is dangerous in, in, yes, so. Then I want you guys to think about something, uh, I don't, Cozy Grove, does that come to mind to anybody? It's the counties made most of it, they have between four to six hundred kids a year down there, fourth graders. They would stand no chance. And so, I, I know the money, a hundred thousand, this, that, but Stacy's right, you know, are we just gonna stay back and hope somebody else can do something and they get left on their own? I, I think, when you think about four to six hundred fourth graders, taking the whole class. I don't know, I, I don't know where, what are we doing?
Well, I think it was you, Rich, that you said that there's other, there's other things being worked on to reuse the carbon. You know? Options out there and, and so that's, that's another idea. There's other things we're working, the other, the other issue is, is that also, you know, and, uh, like even by doing this, it's gonna have such a minimal effect on the carbon in, in the air. It really isn't gonna have any effect, there's too many other things around us that produce carbon.
I have a question. Can you, as our supervisors, because they sent you from the Capitol up here, like all these people saying, we've tried, we've tried, they sent us to you again. Can you now call the representatives and report that we cannot do this without you agreeing with us and working together to get this stopped? Because that's the constituency of your community.
Well, the problem is, we should, we should just send you right back to the State House again, you know, and tell, tell, tell the governor that she shouldn't accept money from Ransetter. That's where the problem starts. It, it's all about big money and Ransetter polished the wheels in Des Moines with a lot, a lot of money to the governor and different people. So, it's back to big money, let's just accept the fact.
And we can argue the pros and cons all day, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Go ahead, yeah.
Nancy Erickson, you don't have the money to fight Summit, do you have the money when the county gets sued? Because people died from a pipeline and the suing the county that you didn't protect them?
Or I've had somebody, I've had several people tell me, even if nobody dies, this gets passed through, they're gonna sue the county. Actually, they're gonna sue the board of supervisors for not doing their job. I've had several guys tell me that. So, I mean, either way, it's gonna cost money. I mean, you, you guys might, well, win every, every fight, but you gotta hire a lawyer, you know, and still. Either way, there's money there, which way do you wanna spend it?
Well, you know, we're in lawsuits all the time.
Yep, yep, I was there.
Yeah, you know how they work.
Yep, I'm just saying, I'm just saying what people tell me that they're, they're talking about going after you.
We're used to it.
Like what I was gonna say, we can argue the pros and cons, you know, of the pipeline and if there's other options and whatnot all day long, but, uh, I guess pertaining to the ordinance, how are we gonna move forward? Are there any changes that we as a board desire to make or think should be made? Or are we just, are you guys just wanting to, to leave it as it is? I, I mean, I would, my opinion is I, I would like to move forward with something. I don't, I don't want to just sit around and, and wait and, you know, be the fly on the wall for when something does happen. But I, I, you know, that's up to you guys too.
I'm fine with the ordinance as it's written, 'cause I don't really wanna start doing anything other than what the zoning commission brought to us. And it's just saying we don't want a pipeline, which is what everybody tells me. They really do not want a pipeline in the county, so why should we change the ordinance? That's my opinion, Mr. Stecker, your opinion will go down the line.
I'm, I'm very concerned about legal ramifications with this. I, I'm wouldn't, would never answer the question of what's a life worth. I think that's my position on that, it's been fairly clear through EMS conversations. But, um, this is outside of our wheelhouse as far as I'm concerned, for a short summary.
John?
I, yeah, I, looking at the ordinance, I don't see the, any changes that we would make would change an outcome. You know, so I don't think that we need to change the ordinance at all. And I do like the idea of getting the ball rolling on something and, you know, moving along with the next step.
Kurt?
I'm, I think the only thing I would change in regards to the ordinance is, in regards to roads and drainage, I believe the fee should be higher, but-
We did change that for drainage for crossings, we raised the fee.
Seventy-five hundred?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, we did raise it.
I'm sorry, I'm just hopeful. But I'm, I'm more likely to move forward with an ordinance. I think safety is the most valuable thing and, again, with all these other counties passing ordinances and then being involved in litigation too, even in passing an ordinance, we can still, you know, we're, we're a part of a collective fight, it's not just Cusworth County spending millions of dollars. That's just, that's just my opinion, I, I think it, it's worth moving forward and going through the process. I, I understand and the people need to understand that if the state comes out with something, if Fims comes up with something, we can't, we can't fight that, I mean, that, that's over, that's a higher authority.
So, if the utility board rules in favor of Summit and Navigator, your position would be to fold them?
Other, other than in regards to roads and drainage, I don't know what else we, we, we could continue in the ordinance if the state gave them permission to. I, I, I mean, that's a big question that I have.
That is, the, the elephant in the room is the green, or utilities.
Right. And, and federal. I just think, being that the bucket is passed to the county, we should do what we can while we have the opportunity to do something. That's, that's my thing.
Jack?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, there's some good points made, you know, um, how other ways that we spend money. And we've done, and, uh, we probably have the ability to do a budget, bend it, you know, this year, have, next year be a different story, but I guess we'll face the budget next year. We'll, we'll make, we'll, we'll cut, we already know we're probably gonna make some deep cuts next year, so I guess we'll face that when we get there, but, um, they, they do, the other comment was, you know, these other counties probably feel like they're, you know, thrown to the wolves, 'cause, you know, the other, the other counties aren't joining in and, and, uh.
Well, there's some counties that have a whole bunch of it already, these ones all signed already and they're not fighting it. There's more counties, I think, that accepted it and fought it.
So, yeah, um, this is what I'm hearing from our constituents, are that, um, don't worry about the money. If you have to raise taxes to, to do it, they'll, they'll accept that. So, I guess, I'm hearing people saying we should move forward.
I think fair statement with the amount of, just in the amount of raises that were given to, within the county this year, it's more than a hundred thousand dollars. Well, maybe not.
And I, I'm not, I'm not gonna say a hundred thousand dollars is the, um, deciding factor at all for me, that's, that's a portion if anything, but a hundred thousand
is pretty cool.
is not, not the entirety of my decision by any means.
The thing is too, is it can go above that.
Yeah, we were told anywhere from six figures to a million.
Yep.
And I guess my point would be before it got to the million, we would have stopped the lawsuit.
Right.
Is that a general consensus?
I would share hope so.
'Cause I don't think you wanna spend a million dollars taxpayer's money.
I, and I think we need to look at the budget and have an amendment before we get to a certain level or set a certain dollar amount for a beginning limit. I don't know if, I don't know if Alarson Cooney would even do that or not, but I think we need to be watching that a little bit.
Roger?
Yeah.
Didn't we say something quite a while ago that if Shelby's getting sued a hundred thousand, all the people that signed that paper, we all shared the expense?
That, that agreement was signed, but that does not share litigation for ordinance, we are on our own for that.
But that was supposed to cover everything.
No, that is only for intervening at Iowa Utilities Board. We are on our own a hundred percent for, uh, county ordinance.
Our, our best fight still is with Utilities Board, for them to make a ruling that it's not in public interest. And we are sharing in that cost with all the other counties.
That, that we are sharing that one.
Yeah, and that, and that's still our best trump card to get it stopped, is to have the Utilities Board decide that it's not in the public good to have a CO2 pipeline.
But then they can that lady and cancel bills, get two other movies in that are coming forward.
Yeah, all three are were appointed by the governor.
So, there's our governor out the window.
They're all appointed by the governor, correct.
Well, that's where contacting the governor would be.
You should have a bigger checkbook than Ransetter though.
If somebody's gonna have to take responsibility if someone died, if there's a child or a family, and this falls on Governor Reynolds. And, uh, although there's enough evidence out there that they wanted a substitution committee, um, and it was set up. There wasn't safety people on there, so somebody is ultimately gonna have to pay the price for this. It may not be in this earth, but it will be done, as far as I'm concerned. You have top legislators down there that, and you have the guts to come out of their office, you had another one on the most important day was out campaigning. So, yeah, there is gonna be responsibility. I'm sorry for the people in this room, we're all friends, neighbors. I, I don't have any spot up there, I don't have any spot out here, but, you know, we are together, but let's just call it for what it is. And that's what it is. It saddens me, that is kind of been less politics than it is controlled by a few that work against the rest of us. And you're not, I don't know if you're an elected official or if you're just a higher E in that position, but that is the final line. And that's what we're sharing that, so, so going to the governor knowing all this, you know, really, um, good luck, I guess, as far as I'm concerned. It's not gonna go well at this point.
It's not.
We can't make a decision today.
To accept the, uh, planning and zoning recommendation?
Yes, that would be the, uh, the decision would be to accept the zoning recommendation.
And do we need to include setting dates for public readings at that point?
Or come with the-
That's all part of the process.
So, we need to have that on the agenda too?
That, that's part of the motion would be?
Yeah, yep. So, I think it needs to be-
We will set the public readings and do the, correct the future.
Is that something we should have our attorney on the phone for, so it's laid out?
No, but I can talk to him.
Let him know that we're proceeding.
If it passes?
Yeah, we're putting on the- Yes.
Don't, don't put a turd ahead of the horse.
Right, right, we're, we're moving on in the process, is what I'm saying.
Doug, you got any comments?
I have one, uh, definitions, if you look at the report, um, in Appendix E, page one sixty-seven, uh, one seventy-seven.
What was the number again? One?
It's page one sixty-seven, E one sixty-seven.
E one sixty-seven.
In the definition of facility, it was recommended, and this is kind of overlooked by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I would ask that, in the definition of facility, that it's added and emergency shut-off valves.
Okay, Doug, what, which one did you read again?
It's up through the, up towards the top, the definition of facilities.
Okay, I just got to page-
That it has including all related substations. But, and to include and emergency shut-off valves, just as part of that definition.
So, that and emergency shut-off valves was not part of the report from planning and zoning, that's your recommendation?
That is correct.
Okay, that's your recommendation?
I would ask that the board include that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that addition. You find it, Roger?
Yeah. Does that mean related substations to the liquid pipeline, Doug, is that what you're intending?
It's just a definition of facility. So, where facility is used in the, in the ordinance status.
That blue was not from planning and zoning, that's what he is, he recommended that. That was a comment that's highlighted, that's all. They, they commented-
There was a comment from Navigator.
Off of ground valve sites as well, so that was their question. And then they added the language for that. Yeah.
Anybody got a problem with that?
Nope.
That would be changed on the next day.
It's a, it's a huge document, there's-
Well, yeah, it takes a minute to flip through hundreds of pages.
A hundred other things, it probably could be tweaked at it, but, I mean, it's a living document, just in time.
To some degree, yes, but we should have it correct when we publish it.
You have any other questions?
No, I'll talk to the Tim Whitfoe and make sure we get everything, um, correct for next week.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
If you decide to move forward with this ordinance, who are we responsible for enforcing?
It's a planning and zoning.
Right.
And industry.
So, if the pipeline opposes it and this goes to litigation, I'm only asking this question 'cause I haven't seen the ordinance yet. So, if I could get a copy, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Is there anything in that ordinance that talks about eminent domain? Is it a possibility that you as a board could look at adding a paragraph to this zoning ordinance about eminent domain that we would not recognize it? And I only ask that because everybody asks me all the time, are you a constitutional sheriff? My response is, if you're an elected official, you should be a constitutional official. And if this ever comes down to the road where a landowner is forced with eminent domain, I don't intend to, uh, enforce that unless I'm ordered by a judge, which makes it ask for the appeal process. So, when I sit there as a sheriff and listen to this discussion, I, I completely understand what everybody's talking about, but I'm gonna defend the rights of the people as far as their life, liberty and property. And I think if we're gonna look at an ordinance, let's tell the state that we won't recognize eminent domain in Cusworth County, because we are a sovereign county. There's ninety nine of them here in Iowa. And I think that what each county needs to look at is take a stance as a sovereign county and at least make sure that they understand that we won't recognize it. And then when it comes to the point where the pipelines have to force that issue, the courts will see that, that we recognize itself as a sovereign county. We've done it with the Second Amendment.
Yes.
And it's just a suggestion I'm gonna give as a sheriff because when this comes down to enforcement, that's my my stance on it.
Tammy, would you make a note on that?
May I just say something?
Yeah.
Eminent domain comes from property rights that come from it's not in the constitution, but it's property rights that come from England and our forefathers. And eminent domain very I mean, when we go out and buy road right away, road department, when we go out and buy road right away, we start the process of eminent domain. We don't have to get to a point where we are cutting down the property, but there are times where eminent domain is needed. And we would get, we would, we would have very few road projects. There's unintended consequences with a statement like that. And before, I I think the county attorney would even say that, you, there's gotta be a way that eminent domain issues. I don't think that this particular issue is eminent domain per se, it's whether this pipeline should be able to use eminent domain.
That's what I've been noting.
Well, if you're gonna say, if you're gonna say you can't use eminent domain.
Well, this is more, this is an ordinance about a pipeline, correct?
This is.
It's about hazardous liquid.
This is a, this is an ordinance about hazardous material.
Even a drainage district uses eminent domain to go and do that.
But the difference you're talking Doug is between public use and this is private. And for all the meetings I've been to with the pipeline, this is about the biggest, the first question I asked up in Dakota a year and a half ago to the public board member, utility board member, was can you define how this is a public use? And he couldn't answer. I don't know if any of your folks are up there, but I asked that question and he couldn't answer. So I wanna explain my my statement I just made. I'm talking about eminent domain on hazardous materials for a pipeline. I'm not talking about public use where we gotta have roadways and riverlands and bridges and that kind of stuff. I'm talking about hazardous materials.
There's, there's oil, there's fuel, there's other pipelines in the Cassuth County that would fall under the definition of hazardous materials.
That would under proved because the oil company comes.
No, I I'm not, I'm just saying there's unintended consequences with doing that. And I would I would definitely request that the board get some legal.
We're gonna, we're gonna do some weeks.
I I would, I would ask a question to the board if it would be worth exploring the topic that our sheriff just brought up a week further instead of proceeding immediately. Um I would, I would be focused on eminent domain more than anything else in here. Like I said, I I don't feel comfortable throwing a number on this. Whether it's a hundred feet or a hundred miles, I don't feel that's um within my knowledge base. But eminent domain, I have said from the beginning, I'm not supportive of that for these projects. Um like I said, Henry Stone's um comments and bill was to the effect of ninety percent. If we bring something to that effect for Cassuth County alone and have our um authorize our sheriff to enforce that, I would be all for that. But maybe that's something we need to explore a little further.
Roger, would you consider writing that up as a, you know, some sort of an official letter to the supervisor so we can, you know, have a signed copy?
I would like to read the ordinance first and I'm.
Sure, sure.
The one that the zoning is recommending to you. That's why I was very hesitant on even saying anything today because I have not seen it.
And and I do think we need to consider the other consequences and that was part of my point about the language and the definitions. But if it can be limited to these specific projects by um specific use, I I don't know what our legal ability is in that category, but I would like to look that further.
I could say the judge just ruled in the case for the engineers were trying to do a survey on a farm and he would not let them in twice. He turned away and the judge ruled in favor of the farmer because that was his private problem. So Roger's got more of a point there than what we might think.
If we could throw away this entire report and have one paragraph that says we're not going to allow eminent domain in this county for these two projects, I would be supportive of that. But um I would like to look into that topic further.
And I fully and completely understand what Doug's comment is because.
Can't have the Iowa Utility Board assume it's creating the eminent domain. We can't fight that. Our turn is over until the second.
Sometimes you can ask a question with a little bit different language in the question and get a different answer.
I don't think that's the question Doug. The the question is whether Roger has to enforce it in Cassuth County.
Whether whether our home rule would trump that.
If home rule would be older.
I think that question's already been answered.
We could put on the agenda for next week to have this discussion.
Again, we're talking about.
I would like that.
Land use.
Yeah, let's, let's just, let's just put it on the agenda for next week.
Do you wanna leave both on and have that discussion with Mr. Whipple first, or do you wanna take off the one about accepting the recommendation?
Let's uh, let's keep them both on, but the one, the conversation with Tim Whipple first.
Okay, I'll see if he's available.
Okay.
That, the possible negative to that is you would be receiving information that you would not not very adequately be able to digest immediately and then the public would have the expectation that you're making a decision on the other topic since it's on the agenda.
Right.
So my thought would be postpone that a week and see how the conversation goes and see what our options are.
Well, what do you guys think?
Mr. Whipple's would be in closed session.
Yes.
Exactly, and.
And that would be before.
It almost ends up being two conflicting agenda items though.
Yeah, and and it would be confusing for the public, I feel.
And confusing for mine too. To do them back to back anyway.
Okay. Well then.
We can put them back to back and if you have a problem with them next week, then we will postpone it for a week. Let's put them on the agenda back to back and then see how you feel when we get to it. And then if we don't wanna address the issue, I'll accept a motion to postpone it for a week.
Yeah, yeah. That's kind of my thought to having them both on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend.
And if Mr. Whipple's not available next Tuesday?
See if you can find a time and we'll come in and make sure that we can come in.
Yeah, if he's available later this week, the center better.
Yep, we'll find a time that'll work. We'll all come in, but it'll be in closed session.
And I just wanna clarify my comment. There is a place for eminent domain within our law and there's a due process for it. And as a sheriff, we've done con donations on property like what Doug's talking about. So I don't wanna be misunderstood that I'm against eminent domain. I'm against eminent domain that takes away the rights of the landlord and doesn't want it, when it's not public use. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
This is a private company with private profit. And the utility board member that I asked question of was not able to answer to me, how is this public use? And that's what eminent domain is. The government can do it with public use.
And and I would much rather take a stand on that with ourself or any other counties than throwing numbers at a wall. So that's, that's my position.
And I don't mean to disrupt the meeting, but I wanna see the ordinance and that's the only reason I ask because if it comes down to enforcement, everybody's gonna look at me. So I wanna make sure it's clear that I I do agree there's a place for eminent domain, but not in this project.
And the reason I was asking for, you know, a signed letter by you is so that way if the question comes up, well, does your sheriff back it? Yes, he backs it a hundred percent, so.
But we'll let him see the ordinance first.
Yeah, 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 of course.
If Tammy can send me the ordinance so I can read it, I will give a written response.
Maybe you oughta just grab one of these books.
I've got several of them. That's all I have to say.
Thanks Roger.
If I may, uh I remember Roger, up there at that meeting has been a year and a half. Lots changed in a year and a half. There are alternatives. And so this whole thing was sold on it was gonna save Iowa's state farmers. Well, there's alternatives, they're actually better. And so this idea that uh it was private, it's for the best, best for us, the state communities has gone, going away. And they know that. So their crux of their argument was that. And their alternatives, and actually for a lot of these ethanol plants, there there are some they're installing in-house. Don't need a pipeline, in-house, producing a cream product on the methanol, and they're gonna be more profitable. So it really cr- really acts the crux of their argument. And as far as we have to do this, we don't. And uh they're a billion dollars uh behind. Uh they lost some of it, a billion dollars of a budget. And so let's just see it for what it is, you know, there's a county up in North Dakota, the whole county, they don't want them in there, period. And they're fighting it. And they got some teeth and they wanna push it out of their county. So I I think we're on the right track. I I really do. And it's hard, but I think if we can stay together, we'll have a lot more strength. And it's gonna be very hard pointing at a county that wants to protect four to six hundred fourth graders in an area that's about two and a half miles south of Algonquin. Uh good luck with that one too, so.
But you also have to accept the fact that they've, farmers have accepted millions and millions of dollars for right of way already.
But it's a small percentage, I think.
No, it's, it's, it's over fifty percent of the total project.
But it should be way over that. I mean, if the idea that this thing was gonna save everything, how many people come in here fighting tooth and nail for this thing or not seeing it? And so um I think if you were to ask somebody like Brian Jordy, he would say that is a pathetic number at fifty percent, you know, it should be seventy, eighty, whatever. I mean, that's why they wanted ninety percent. Jeez, ninety percent can't believe in this thing and forget it now with the state house. But it was a, but the Farm Bureau said fifty percent to me is not very much.
I've heard forty-three percent, so I'd like to see proof it's over fifty percent because when you talk to farmers, it's not fifty percent.
Are you saying forty-three for Cassuth County or for the state or the whole project? Which which metric?
We're talking probably.
I have heard forty-three percent for the project.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably pretty accurate. I, but there's been a lot of money accepted already. They they sent out a lot of money.
And and we could, I mean, it's been said already, we could beat this horse to death and we could talk pros and cons till next Tuesday if we wanted to stay here that long. But um we do have other things to attend to.
We have an agenda looking forward now and we got stuff set on the agenda to work on this, so. I don't think there's any more we can do.
Nope. We're gonna, we're gonna go to uh road wider, you ready for road wider, right away Doug?
Today. Yeah, we'll have stuff on the agenda.
Well, there's, there's just no action today. It was not.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
You wanna take a five minute break?
Take a break till nine thirty.
Yeah, we'll take a five minute break.
Yeah, I think what I need is.
Carter, I know him.
Understand, understanding you're gonna be on the memorabilia committee for Laverne there. Well, okay, so I'll tell you how that happened. Mark Black, you're down there. And she says, hey, you're on a committee with me at the school for memorabilia. And then I ran into her at the gas station. What committee am I on? And and she says, full of memorabilia stuff at the school.
Thank you.
Not on that committee. Well, there's a carter on the committee and I don't know any other carters in Oregon. So we're gonna meet next Tuesday, Monday, or Wednesday. What works for you? Like, uh, well, I guess I'm.
I don't have.
I got involved and I said, well, that'd be nice of John, but he's gonna, the committee, Johnny is gonna be on a committee. I asked Johnny, I thought I told you about that. I thought I remembered that. That's fine. So, so yes, I am. So, well, as I say, they were talking, you know, a lot of the schools still have their memorabilia and they still have their buildings. Correct. It's like, well, if we're gonna tear down Laverne there. Which hasn't been decided yet. Yeah, so we got a lot of details to figure out for how that whole process is gonna look. This thing with the Algonquin. And uh our city council. Pretty far, yeah, so, well, it's, I don't know.
Mr. Wafter.
Yeah, of course. Have a good one.
You know, it's gonna want to run, be to run down empty building for every creature to run through.
I I know. And so it's, and that's just, how feasible, of course, every community would like to keep our school all at Heath and Jim and like, we're just seeing how feasible is it? And if it's not, it's not, it is it.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, and granted, Algonquin is in a little different position. They have a lot more money. They have a lot more organizations that help.
Well, it's a private owner that bought the building.
Yeah, they, yeah, so I mean, that's an investment there. And being it's on me.
The only, the only stipulation was that they kept the auditorium for public use.
Right, yeah. Which I think a lot of that use has kinda gone away too. So a lot of, a lot of that is now like the dancer cycles and, you know, stuff like that. But they did have like practices and stuff. They do, they do, but.
Yeah. Yeah, they're performing.
The P C has taken a lot of that, which understandably so, yeah, yeah, so.
We'll see it.
Have a good day, Brian.
Silicon Valley.
Watershed.
Watershed.
Okay.
Um, you guys, have you guys even had meetings or anything like that for that? Okay, um because one of the things that got brought up in that hazard mitigation planning process was, yeah, maybe type of watershed stuff. Um so I I talked with Gal, I can't remember her name right now, but she was hoping to get some information. Who to talk to about that and because there's some things that maybe like plans in there that they can utilize in a hazard mitigation plan.
I committee, this committee. I mean, I, I have no idea.
Okay, so I, they had a meeting at the beginning of the year. I would have informed of it.
They also had a meeting at the beginning of the year. I was also never informed of it. And I sent emails, never heard anything back. So I'm hoping that I get included on the next one.
Who did you take that on from? Was that?
They're both on Gail's. So they, uh, okay, so I just kind of ended up with that too, but.
Yeah.
And then Care Connection was done.
You need to reach out to Gail and see if he has a contact for that, that.
I think I've contacted them now and I'm hoping I get included on the next one. So I think, I think we should be okay, but
Sure.
They just assumed that Cassuth County didn't send it, they'll get any back. So whatever.
Yeah, cause there's just, I I talked to her and she said that she'd wanted some information that, you know, possibly be included in the Cassuth County hazard mitigation plan stuff, so.
Sure, sure. Yeah. No, I'd like to go to the Blue River meetings uh when they have them, because that's in Clarien, so it's pretty, pretty close.
Yeah.
And I'm in the watershed, so I mean, meet something.
Yeah.
Right.
That's a good conversation.
Yeah.
That feels a good one.
Yep, yep. Doug, today?
Well, I'm fine. How are you guys?
Good, alright.
Good.
Got the exciting portion of the day done.
Carter, how'd your name get on all this decision making?
Decision making?
Yeah, on the planning and zoning amendment for purposes regarding restricting usage. This person to contact is Carter's name.
Probably because he said to put it on the agenda for the agenda request.
Well, so it's, I guess we're, we don't have to worry about it. It's up to Carter.
Yeah, Carter's had it all.
That's right, that's right.
Carter, what do you think we should do, Carter?
I gotta go.
You're gonna be sick next week.
I might be sick next week.
I was trying to think of something and gosh, now I can let Carter make the decision.
I seen you out riding your bike.
Yeah, I had a neighbor. Well, a neighbor, I saw ya. Neighbor called me up and wanted some help moving something, so I rode my bike over to his place and then rode back home.
Okay.
Quick.
Who? Hey Doug, that, that request number is twenty-two where they need a load of dirt.
Twenty-two? And that, and that explains why we didn't know what we were supposed to do with this. Cuz we're like, I might do this. She's like.
It's lateral sixty-six to drain ninety.
Yeah.
That's the one she did.
Is that the one for?
Beam.
Well, that explains why we were like, what do we do with this?
For Dan Binkin?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in German township.
Oh, okay. Ninety goes that far?
Yeah.
That stop sign, Kyle, was that northbound or southbound traffic?
It was on the north side of the blacktop, so it would've been southbound traffic coming up to the blacktop.
See Anton, he knocked the sign down again on the dirt road.
Pardon me?
Anton, every year he knocks the sign down on the dirt road. We should bill him for it.
You gotta catch him.
Yeah, you gotta set up a trail cam again.
Yeah. Well, you don't wanna go down the wide and you're. He doesn't fold his bean yet, he leaves it on. Thirty foot heads on a dirt road.
Am I not big enough to say that?
You see him do it.
Well, if he slid over a little more, he might have been a ditch.
Make sure your shoes are covered with green. That's fine.
No, it, oh. Now that doesn't do it.
All right, recording's still on, we are back into session. And construction in the right of way, we have one, Doug.
Yes, Midland Power Company has requested to, uh, and it's actually two separate locations. Down in Garfield Township, they are rebuilding along Fiftieth Avenue and Sixtieth Avenue, south of One Ten Street. And it'll go to the South County line, they're gonna be rebuilding overhead, uh, overhead facilities there. I recommend that the board would approve of this.
Do I have a motion to approve construction right of way? Carter?
Second.
Second by Josh. Any discussion on it? Very none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous.
There you are. Very good, thank you.
That is all the requests for construction and road right of way. Discussion, merrimenters to be pouring tomorrow. There's a plan for that bridge deck up in Lincoln Township. Yeah, going to airport, uh, the project was awarded by the city. I think they're waiting for some federal concurrence with that, but that project is moving forward. And then we have an Iowa DOT project on Highway fifteen, right south of Fenton. That is to schedule to start anytime. They will be using our P thirty and V fourteen, I think is what it is, uh, for an official detour. And we'll make sure that we also watch gravel roads there. Got open positions at the mechanic shop, which we're scheduling some interviews for. And we just received a resignation out of the lead yard shop this morning. So I will be advertising for that. And we do have some equipment down, a loader at the transfer station went down. We have a secondary road loader there, uh, taking place at that. Uh, we have a semi tractor that, uh, the, something to do with emissions, particulate filter was plugged. Why, we don't know. It seemed to be regenerating and everything, but it is being repaired. And then I don't know, has anyone talked with the fair board? There was, we had, uh, three motor graders. We traded in one with the idea that we were gonna keep, the road department was gonna keep one with the spare and the fair board was going to purchase another one. Does anyone talk to any financial? I guess, is the fair board going to be purchasing that, is that the understanding?
When, when was that the plan?
When we purchased the three motor graders. We only traded in one for that purpose.
Yeah, a long time ago, the fair board said they wanted, wanted to buy a motor grader. Or the county would donate a motor grader and that's, I don't think that that was.
If the county, if the county is supposed to donate it, I would rather not have the secondary road department donate it.
Right.
So I don't know if the, if the county is supposed to be donating it, who is supposed to be, who's supposed to be compensating the road department is my question.
Correct. Yeah, nobody's ever made any, there was never any discussion on any of that.
Yeah, I guess that's the first time here in over two.
So.
Yeah, the only times they could've been in here was talking about the, the grant stands and, and.
They had come in and they'd asked about it, the, the motor grader.
It hasn't been since.
That's why we had that in our plan. I don't know, we've received one of the three motor graders, I do not know when the next two are coming in.
Can I, can I ask you, what was the allowable trade on that motor grader?
I think it was seventy thousand.
Okay.
Do you remember when that was approved to do the, um, purchase of those three?
I don't remember exactly, but I could certainly get that.
If you could find that, I would appreciate that.
It's been quite a while.
Yeah, I mean, I remember it, I don't remember exactly when, no.
The two getting traded in are the Hs that are left? Hs or Gs?
I, I'm not sure. I think one was an H, I thought one was a G and the one, uh, I, I can't remember exactly, I gotta look at my inventory.
Okay, you don't know if it was that seventy thousand, it's worth a G or an H?
I'll, I'll have to get that, Roger.
Okay.
I think, I would get those specifics.
I'd, I'd sure keep the H, I wouldn't let that go. They were just too good a motor grader.
So.
You know how many hours are on them?
It's over ten thousand.
Yeah.
Hours. Uh, four ten hour working days, our foreman, shop foreman, road foreman have all talked about that. We think that that, uh, our roads are in good enough shape. Um, what I was thinking was starting at Monday, I don't know if the board has any concerns with that at all.
They take Hancock, yeah, Hancock County started and they first.
What do the hours look like for that?
Don't we typically start that after Memorial Day?
It's not really spelled out. It, it says we will notify the men and there's some understanding that overtime is after ten hours instead of after eight hours. The men typically work, the operators, the road department typically work seven thirty to four o'clock with thirty minute lunch.
Okay.
When we go to four ten hour days, they go from six thirty to five with a half hour lunch.
Okay.
So.
I have no issue with it at all. I think they get more done on ten hour days.
Okay, well, we will, I'm planning to start them next Monday on that, so. And other than that, I don't really have anything, um, other discussion.
Did you hear anything back on the truck that we took to get fixed?
We had a truck over there that had, it was, it was, had a lot of codes and they, I don't know what they did exactly, but we had it back running in our fleet now. But on the way over, we brought a semi, the semi tractor with the, the.
Regenerator?
With the full box, uh, that exhaust box and the particulate filter. And they ran some of their diagnostic, they checked some things, but it actually, it was, uh, the same truck was just repaired for the same problem about, I, I don't know, near future, meaning the last year, year and a half, so.
What is Tyler gonna be here for?
That's not Bowman make, that's McFlure.
Is it?
Yes.
Anything else for Doug? Yep.
We're, uh, as far as that review, is that gonna happen at a certain time or are you just gonna notify us?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna ask Marge how long this is gonna take. And, um, so I, as soon as she comes in, I know I'll send out an email to everybody.
I would say a couple of minutes and.
Thanks Doug.
Okay.
Yeah, shouldn't, shouldn't be too much.
I sent Roger a link to that report to Roger Fisher.
Okay, and I, I, I scanned it into, so he'll have it now.
All right.
Yeah, so this drain four, lot eleven project is McFlure Engineering out of Fort Dodge.
Okay.
And they're not gonna be here for that?
No, no.
From Bancroft up to Sweet City area.
No, it is, uh, it is a lateral ditch off of drain four. It does start right north of Bancroft, but it's only about three miles, two miles, whatever. It, it kinda goes north.
It's a short ditch, it goes kinda northeast.
North and west of Bancroft?
It branches off just before the main open ditch gets to the lagoon area. So it's just on the east side of that, about half a mile.
If you, uh, it crosses the blacktop, that Tom Anton blacktop?
If you, if you pull up your map, you'll be able to see there's red.
I know where it is, I know where Tom is. Get some soil sampling for that one.
Yeah, it, it's a short ditch.
So if you go up to Bancroft, you'll see the points all along the main open ditch of four. And then there's another one that goes about two, a little over two miles north, kinda weaves east and west a little bit. But you'll see those points.
At one time they had an issue, somebody said their thirty-six inch tile that was jumping in it. Were they on the board?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, you're welcome, sorry about that.
No, they were not.
Yep. Oh, I see.
They didn't find it.
I, I was out there.
Didn't find thirty-six inch tile.
There's not a thirty-six inch tile there.
Marge lost it.
Are we in drain four, Grant, or something?
Yeah.
We should ever know that.
Goes by Goche's?
Goes by J. Goche, just southeast of J. Goche's, inside, yep.
What was being done there again?
It was a clean out project.
Clean out?
Clean out the ditch and the head wall needed some work.
Yeah, so there's, like, there's stuff in the completion report, we just acknowledged that for today. And then we set time and date for the public hearing and that's when the, that's when we have the hearing and owners can.
Okay.
Bring in any concerns, all that, but we're just basically setting time and date today.
Gotcha.
March?
May thirtieth is what?
Yep, and Danny, Danny called me about that.
Okay.
So, anyway.
May thirty at what time? Ten AM?
Ten o'clock?
Yeah, if that works for you.
Don't get nervous, I wanna write it down so I can remember it.
Yep, that's good.
I would make a motion to acknowledge the completion report and set the time and date for May thirtieth at ten AM.
I'll second your motion. And ask for any discussion on the motion.
Did that time work, Tammy?
Yep.
Okay.
And that is for DD four eleven?
Four eleven open ditch, yep.
Yep. And we did all this before you two were on the board, so you're, you're kinda in the.
There was, there's a very.
I'm looking at a picture right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a very small amount of finish work like this spring, but most of it was done last year.
Yeah.
Ritzel's the, the now's the four or after?
Well, it's kind of a two step.
That would be after, cuz it's cleaned out there.
It ended up to be a two step thing. We cleaned a little bit up earlier because one of the outlets was plugged with mud. So I had Ritzel go out and clean out from the head wall south ways so that they get some free board on their outlet.
Oh.
Cuz it was forcing, forced outlet.
Yeah.
So it was one of them that, then we decided to clean the ditch so, cuz we made a puddle.
Yeah, it, it got bigger than it.
Yeah. It's what happens once more. Any questions on the report? If not, all those in favor of the motion on May thirtieth, ten o'clock for completion hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous. We are up to drainage repairs, Marge?
Yes.
We have them in our folder, all of them?
You wanna start this time or you want me to?
Would you get the rest of them?
I got the rest of them.
Well, I'll start.
Kyle's a big winner today.
Yep, I got a request on Drain District one sixty-one. It's number twenty-seven, uh, intake, flag broken tile, large washout, needs repair, Deb Smith. And it is in Union Township, fourteen inch tile.
I got request number twenty-five, Lead Yard, section three, uh, for Robin Gale House. Ritzel's already fixed that. Number twenty-six, Hebron, section twenty-one, two spots, broken tile. Looks like a bigger sized tile for Dan Binkin. And then twenty-eight is Grant, section twelve, outlet pipe washed out, needs repaired for Scott Farrell. Well, that's my three.
Did they, did they tell you if it was planned?
And then one of the, your name was the last speaker the week before that said it had hopefully enough to fit a car in?
Yeah.
I'll just assume we'll.
I haven't heard, I.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if you hadn't looked up that one.
I, no, not yet, I stopped it, Ritzel, they were gonna go up there.
I didn't know the supervisors take care of the request, Roger.
I have a motion for the supervisors to take care of their request.
I'll second.
I have a second. Get that down. I have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous.
Anybody talk to Todd?
I, um, emailed everybody, but if you wanna buzz Todd, you can.
What is he?
Todd is one forty-one. Todd is one forty-one.
Um, Marge, anything else on drainage?
We are up to you. Yep.
Did, uh-
Perfect, thanks.
Did, did Nora Beer ever get to the, up in Westly Township?
Yeah, I was gonna ask Bolandus. He was, he's working on the ones that were, um, being planted and that was CRP, so he's hoping to get to it next week.
Oh, okay.
Next week?
We can't plant because-
Yeah, it's backed up into the table at both sides.
We can't plant because we haven't been planted.
You guys farm that? Oh, okay.
The, uh, Road Department's gonna haul a little dirt in, I remember one.
Okay, from Road Department.
Yeah, I told Doug the, the number.
Tammy, you don't, you don't think farmers wanna get in and plant their fields anytime?
We're done, except for that.
You're done except for that? We're done except for- Oh, son of a gun. I feel really bad. Are you gonna have a funeral?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna build it.
You're gonna read, you're gonna receive a mail from Erica?
Yeah, I, I will take out something with and then get it to you, because I wanted to explain the fifty-one thousand fun thing, what the difference is, why, why it's now that I said just do everything.
And then the final, you know, not being the threat, it's just that was the end, yeah.
Yes. No, wherever you want.
How's it coming? How do I pause it?
You can move that. We don't have a computer.
Yeah. Well, you need help with, with the squash.
We'll add him up again someday.
Yeah.
I'm running down the ground quick. Is it, Nick, is that gonna be like a party, like a squash raising party?
I don't know, it might be.
Like a farm raising?
It might be.
Well, you know, if you rebirth a squash, you should have some kind of a celebration.
I know.
Yeah.
Let us know when it's scheduled.
Okay, I will do that. Yeah, I'll do that.
Jack, I emailed it to Lindsay.
Yeah, thank you.
So she should have it.
I'll take this out. Do you, do you have something I can sign? We, it's already signed. We did, oh, we did it?
Yeah, we just sent her the wrong thing.
Yeah, we gave her the wrong one.
We sent her the sheet for the ordinance instead of-
Oh, for putting it in the, yeah, okay.
She can't.
That is a problem.
That's a problem.
I'll leave a link so Todd can see what he's doing.
Well, Carter, you've got broad shoulders, we're leaving it all up to you now.
Okay.
Being that your name was on there, I, I feel a lot better than-
Feeling better today?
Yeah, I feel better. I mean, you shoved it down the hill.
Turn that on with pointers and that sugar block.
Uh, my name's on the request. We're on it. We're planning some things, so. So you're saying you don't have to worry about it?
I, I, it's, I've cleared my conscience. Because I was really getting worried about it and-
Maybe I'll move a half mile south and I'll be in Humble County that way.
We're still waiting for Roger?
Yeah.
And Judy had, uh, another meetings, but she'll come when she's finished with that.
Should we try calling Roger?
Um, you can if you want to. His extension is four zero one.
Hey, uh, we are going through the, that review, the public records request of the meeting laws. Alright. Yep.
He's on his way.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't even have him ten o'clock yet.
No, just across the street.
I bet he'll get here.
I'm at ten?
We're not, we're not, no, there was no time.
No, yeah.
Correct.
Well, while he's on his way, I think I might give.
I just think it watered.
You want Marge to come in, do you?
No, unless she gets it.
She's one of Texas law.
I, it comes to me mutually and I forward it to her.
Okay.
Like the requests go to her, um, but I've already gone on her.
Says it's really, I don't know.
It, it's public record, um, the problem is what he asks for and what he wants to do. And there's no way for us to know what he actually wants and that's why.
Well, I thought you were saying that.
Nope, nope.
I have made sure that, that, that he draws conclusions on that that are fully gone.
But they're trying to make you do better.
I know. I wish it was. We're just talking about, about eleven hundred.
Fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand?
That's the drainage.
Okay. Um, I requested to be on the agenda to kinda go through the sunshine laws, which are Chapter twenty-one, or located in Chapter twenty-one and Chapter twenty-two of the Iowa Code. And they apply to the Board of Supervisors and basically all the elected officials and department heads, uh, to kind of, um, provide information to everyone as to how those laws apply to us and what we can do to avoid complaints that are filed with the Iowa Public Information Board. Uh, it came to my attention that this might be something that we should do, uh, because we have had a series of complaints, uh, that have been filed and, um, have been addressed, uh, so I thought it might be advisable for you guys to know what exactly we have to do. Now, this PowerPoint presentation, as you can see, was prepared by the Iowa Public Information Board. Uh, I went through it. Uh, it's very good, very detailed. Uh, I couldn't have done anything better if I created it myself. Uh, so to not reinvent the wheel, I decided to use their PowerPoint. Uh, I've added some notes, uh, to it to, to remind me to, uh, discuss certain things that apply that may not be, uh, as detailed in the slides. If you have any questions, ask them. Uh, we'll go through it, um, so that we can provide as much education, as much information as possible. I truly believe that, you know, when we're looking at what we do as a public body or as, uh, public officials, uh, the goal is to make sure that, uh, uh, everything is open, uh, to the extent that it can be. And I truly believe that each and every person in this room and who's in the courthouse or across the street at the law enforcement, um, center is, uh, committed to do that. Uh, sometimes things can be perceived differently than what they actually are. And as I get through this, uh, PowerPoint, there's a portion in there, um, regarding best case practice or best situation practices to avoid any potential misunderstandings by the public. Start off with a few quotes. Whenever the people are well informed, they can be trusted with their own government, Thomas Jefferson. Um, and that's true. Uh, what we do is for the public. The public has a right to the information and to, um, uh, understand, view, see what we do and why we do it. Uh, most of us are elected and so we are obligated to make sure that the people who we serve, who have put us in the positions that we are, um, know what we're doing. Uh, and if, if they don't like what we're doing, there's a process to, um, not vote us in at the next election. The liberties of people never were nor ever will be secured when the transactions of their rulers may be concealed from them. Uh, that was by Patrick Henry. Popular government without popular information or the means of acquiring it is put, uh, is but a prologue to a farce or a tragedy or perhaps both. James Madison. This is an overriding presumption. You'll see in both, um, the Chapter twenty-one, the open meetings laws and Chapter twenty-two, the open records laws. Uh, if there is contained in those provisions or interpretations that we put on those provisions of those two chapters, uh, any ambiguity has to be resolved in the favor of openness. So when in doubt, it's open, okay? And probably more important with discussions by the Board of Supervisors, um, you know, to make sure that what they do and how they decide on what they do, uh, and the discussions that generate that decision are held in, in an open forum. Just a little history, I won't, uh, touch on this too long, but, uh, the Chapter twenty-one and Chapter twenty-two, the sunshine laws, the sunshine meaning to, uh, bring openness, uh, and sunshine, um, transparency, uh, to government. Uh, were first enacted in Ju- on July first nineteen sixty-seven, so they've been around a long time. They've been tweaked, uh, over and over, uh, since nineteen seventy. The Iowa Public Information Board came into existence on July first two thousand thirteen, which provides an alternate means for people out there who feel that they have, uh, been, uh, denied access to either open meetings or open records, uh, gives them an efficient and cost-effective and informal process to resolve those complaints. There is still legal action that they can pursue in the judiciary, but that obviously, um, can be, can be expensive. And so the legislature, uh, created this board, uh, to, uh, provide, um, a cost-effective and efficient way to handle any, any issues or complaints. So this is broken up into two sections. First section's Chapter twenty-one, which is the open meetings, uh, law. Uh, it says open meetings one oh one, kind of the designation of, you know, preliminary and, and basic information. Uh, but this deals with, um, meetings, uh, and the openness of those meetings by a public body. Um, as you can see, there's, uh, definitions, a laundry list of definitions, uh, that, um, would be classified as government bodies, boards, councils, commissions, uh, created by law or appointed by, uh, by other governing bodies such as city councils, county boards, supervisors, school boards, et cetera. Um, bodies created by border regions or president of university charged with management or control of athletic programs, advisory boards, advisory commissions and task force, nonprofit corporations who are supported by property tax revenue and licensed to conduct parimutual betting, nonprofit corporations licensed to conduct gambling games, governing bodies of drainage or levy districts, advisory boards, advisory commissions or advisory committees, task force, et cetera, uh, created through twenty E or by executive order of a state or subdivision, advisory boards of general assembly and governor, uh, by executive order. Primarily, as you can see, the highlighted one, uh, is what we're gonna focus on to do with, today with the Board of Supervisors. They are a government body. But as I go on further, uh, other types of, uh, ad hoc committees and committees that are formed by the Board, Board of Supervisors, because as far as the, the issue regarding that, um, if you look at the second one from the bottom, advisory boards, advisory commissions, et cetera, uh, created by executive order. In county government, the executive order comes from the Board of Supervisors, so if it's created by the Board of Supervisors, more than likely, it's gonna be subject to open meetings. We'll get into more detail on that in a second. Does the definition apply to all task force, subcommittees, et cetera? Yes. Uh, if membership, first of all, if a majority of the Board of Supervisors are on that commission, it's open, okay? It does apply. Uh, but when you look at the advisory bodies, uh, those created by the county Board of Supervisors, um, you really need to look at what their course of action is, okay? Do they have the power to develop and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors? If they do, they're subject to Chapter twenty-one. Um, in general, uh, getting back to that first premise, uh, when in doubt, make it open. Um, you know, the recommendation, uh, that the, um, Iowa Public Information Board says is while even though some may not be required to be open, uh, it's often encouraged to do so as a matter of public policy. Again, trying to make everything as transparent as possible so that there are, um, no questions out there as to why things are being, uh, decided uh, in the way that they are. Uh, allow the public to have access to that and that is a best practice that's recommended by the Iowa Public Information Board. What is a meeting? The important thing to look at here is when you look at a majority of the Board of Supervisors, okay? A forum, uh, of the Board of Supervisors, whether it's electronic, formal or informal, that deliberation or action is taking place, okay? So there has to be a majority of the Board of Supervisors. It can be in any way, shape or form that we have available, electronic means, formal or informal, um, in person, whatever. Um, but deliberation and action or action has to be taken place. Uh, it eliminates from that the, um, social gatherings. Our county picnic, obviously, we hope that all of the supervisors attend the county picnic, that's fine. That is not a meeting. It does not have to, uh, be, um, uh, preceded by notice and an agenda. Uh, social gatherings are accepted from that, okay? There are other things that come up that are, are maybe a little bit more, uh, technical in nature. It actually provides in the code, code, social gatherings or, or ministerial types of actions. Uh, ministerial types of actions means, uh, something that is not capable of, uh, discussion, decision, judgment or discretion. Uh, like for instance, uh, if there's an order by this board saying, okay, we're going to, uh, sign this document, okay? And that document's prepared and then the next meeting, you have the document in front of you. By signing that document, since it's already been approved by the board in open meetings or in an open meeting, uh, that would be considered an admis- an ministerial act, okay? There's no decision that anyone can make, no discretion, it's already been made, it's done. Um, now there's some Supreme Court cases that, that have, uh, looked at other types of things. Now, you guys may, as the Board of Supervisors, go to, uh, a meeting with someone who is advising you on details relating to something you're going to make a decision on. So in those types of situations, that would be also considered ministerial if all you're doing is receiving information, okay? So in those, uh, I mean, you know, it could be, say for instance, an engineer, okay? And the engineer is providing you, I guess, not a pound of engineering necessarily.
How about a drainage dis-
Drain dis-
...............
Attending to receive information, okay? Very good, thank you for that. Uh, I was trying desperately to come up with an example, uh, and thanks Doug for doing that. In that situation, if all you're doing is receiving information, it doesn't have to, it's not classified as an open meeting.
What about if we go out on a drainage district facility and look at a project that's been done by an engineering firm and we go out to determine whether the project is completed or not completed as a board, does it need to be on the agenda?
Yes, because of the fact that you're determining whether it was completed or not completed.
So then it needs to be on agenda.
Here's the issue, if, and this is where the, the details and why it would be best in any of those situations to put it on the agenda and publish notice, okay? Because a meeting, and this happened, uh, in a Supreme Court case, a meeting can transform into a ministerial type of meeting and then into a meeting that should, should be, uh, under the open meetings or is required to be, to have the, the notice and the agenda published. So if you're asking questions, if you're- So if you're asking questions, if you're, okay, well, what happens if this is, you know, this is the scenario? And if you're starting to discuss that and getting more than just information from the individual, then it turns into an open meeting. And if you haven't published notice and you haven't given an agenda, that's a problem. Or could be a problem. Again, as a lawyer, a lot of this depends. Okay, but what I'm saying is it's always best to give notice and post an agenda just so that you are covered in case that meeting goes into a meeting that would be subject to the open meetings.
So do you have to publish the time and place where you start?
Yes, and we'll get into what needs to be preceded, what precedes the actual meeting itself here in a second.
Okay.
But that's, you know, that's a good example. So might as well do it, that way you're covered, and if anyone wants to show up and participate, they certainly can. You know, it's better to be safe than sorry. It's better to be open than run into a situation where it could be considered a closed meeting. The purpose of the law is to allow citizens to see how their officials arrive at a decision. Okay? They want to see, and I think generally the people who come and are interested in the topics that you discuss, they want to see and hear your opinions. They want to see how the decisions are made and what the discussions entail. Even retreats are public meetings if a quorum is present, policy is discussed. So I don't know that you guys go on retreats, I mean, I imagine some Board of Supervisors, some supervisors do, some boards do, but that's the point. It can transform into something that would require to be have notice or an agenda post and an agenda posted. Emails. Get into, I think most of you know about the rolling quorum. Okay? Of course, every situation, as it states, is fact-specific. It's easy to send informational emails out, and I'm sure you guys do, and that's fine. That's not in danger of any way being considered a rolling quorum or a walking quorum, as they actually discuss it in this PowerPoint, as long as you're sharing relevant information and you're not intending to avoid the open meetings law. If members want to share an opinion or debate policy, it should be in this room, not on an email. Okay? Should save them for open discussion. Your best practices, save all discussion regarding anything that you're going to be deciding to be done and held in an open meeting. Electronic communication concerning public business is a public record. So when we get into the open records law, realize that, that is a public record, subject to a request and the ability for anyone in the public to gain access to that record.
Can I interject something in a minute? Okay, now we're Summit, Carbon, Solutions Pipeline. Hot subject. When somebody in the public asks us our opinion, are we able to share it or should we keep it for the boardroom?
You can share it. Again, open meetings require what?
People.
A majority of the Board of Supervisors. I think one of the things we talked about not too long ago was, well, if I'm out in the public and someone comes up and says, what's your opinion on this, can I give it to them? Absolutely.
Okay.
And you should, they should know that. But the three of you or more getting together and sharing each other's opinion, now you're in violation of the open meetings law unless it was preceded by notice and an agenda.
Because there's people that have an issue with us sharing our opinions once in a while.
Well, I don't know why, I mean, that's not part of the open meetings law. It has to be a majority of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, and to even go further, if, say for instance, I'm interested in something you're deciding, I ask you for your opinion, and I ask Kyle for his opinion, and I ask Joshua for his opinion. Now there's three, did you violate the open meetings law?
No.
Absolutely not, because you didn't do it among yourselves. You shared it with me. So, you know, I think that that's important for you to do that because your constituents want to know what you're thinking. Okay, especially on a hot topic like that. And on any topic, to be honest with you. Here's another one that's come up in the past, do members of the public have the right to speak in an open meeting? No, they do not, unless they're on the agenda. Okay? We have an open time in the beginning, I don't know how that goes, I'm rarely here during that time. But, you know, I think you open it up for anybody to come in and comment to the board as a group, their positions on certain things, that is them sharing it with you. And so you can limit that if necessary, if it becomes disorderly or disruptive, because they do not have a right to speak at any meeting that they're not on the agenda for. If they're on the agenda, then they obviously have the right to present that.
Today at the meeting for Summit, there was, this room was full, and some people shared their opinions and they did it very respectfully. I don't find anything wrong with that.
No, not at all. You shouldn't, really. My advice would be let them, you know, as long as they're capable of presenting it in a civil way. All right? You do not have to be subjected to abuse or disruptive type of actions. And you can cut that down, you know, you can say enough's enough. If you're going to present something, make it civil. Okay? Because this is a public forum where civility is important. Much the same as in the courtroom. I've seen that where a judge comes down hard on an individual who is being disrespected or making rude comments. So you're in control of that. This is your meeting, it's something that you have the ability to control. Okay, so here's the requirements for the open meetings. If you have three or more, a quorum, and you're going to be discussing items that are going to be decisions that you make or you're, you know, doing any type of discussion or decision that is required to be done in an open forum, it needs to be preceded by public notice of at least 24 hours, given the date, time, place and attendant agenda. Okay? 24 hours notice is the guidepost. However, that being said, we'll get into it doesn't, it doesn't mean that you can't address something not on the agenda if it's considered an emergency type of situation. Okay? But that is very narrowly construed. Okay? So the notice that you have must be sent to any news organization requesting it. I don't believe that there's any problem there. I believe we send it out, is it on Thursday or Friday? Often times, you know, there may be a change between Friday and Monday. That's just understood. Any type of agenda that is put out in advance is subject to change to fit within that 24 hour dating time notice requirement. Must be posted in a prominent place, where's ours posted?
Doug had a question, but ours is placed on Bolton.
Bolton. The, sent to any news organization requesting it. Planning and zoning commission, we've had a couple of meetings. I prepared the agenda for that. I know Tammy forwards it to, or Tammy has requests from news organizations to planning and zoning them because they're under the Board of Supervisors. Do they fall under the, is that a request from them for that?
Well, or a request for notice from the planning and zoning.
So it would have to be directly to.
Because you're separate from, right. But generally speaking, if Tammy has a request from the news media, I assume you do it by email.
Correct.
So the simplicity there is just, you know.
I get it.
No, but.
This one kind of come up with the radio and, but anyway.
Yeah.
Well, let's go back to his planning and zoning commission. If three or more supervisors show up at the planning and zoning commission, what's the right procedure for us?
Show up.
Just show up.
Again, there, it's not just a majority, it's what is happening with the majority of supervisors at that meeting. If you're just there.
Yeah, or they're getting information and not actually discussing and making a decision at that point, then it doesn't need to be an agenda.
Precisely. That's precisely it. With one caveat. If it has the possibility of, you know, going into that, I mean, you know, you're each representing a district and you're going to have differing views on whatever may be discussed at the planning and zoning. If you go there and you think, you know, I really want to find out, you know, how this applies to whatever they're dealing with in your district, you're going to probably be asking questions. And you're probably going to be sharing possibly opinions that you have regarding that piece of property in your or area in your district, for instance. If that's something, the best thing would be to, you know, say, I want to put it on the agenda because I want to potentially go into things that may be discussions or may be decisions or may in fact may affect my judgment on that matter.
So would that require a separate agenda?
Well.
To publish?
No.
No, and you can put it, oftentimes it's on the bottom of the agenda for the week.
Yeah.
You know, it's subject to change, obviously, but.
Well, I mean, like, if we've got three supervisors showing up to a planning zoning meeting and we end up.
No, it's on the same agenda as.
On the same agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, and that provides the notice. If you're wanting to discuss something with that, then you want to put that on underneath it. So in other words, if your purpose is to go there and discuss some issue or some set of circumstances that would, you know, that would impact what you decide or, you know, what your judgment would be on a particular issue, you'd want to list that as an agenda item.
If we wanted to discuss setbacks that they're discussing, we would have to have it on the agenda item. We will discuss setbacks.
I would recommend that, because that way, that way people know what's going to happen. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just so we're clear.
But then again.
It's going to be on the agenda for the planning and zoning.
Yeah, you know, you have the agenda there, but you need to cover your.
Right.
Your quorum or your board and body.
Okay.
Separate from theirs. But get back to the first one, does you being there give you the authority to speak to them and listen to them? I don't know, do they? Generally speaking.
I'm talking to the chair of the planning and zoning commission because, I guess, I don't know, are they, the planning and zoning commission, when they say we're just going to talk about this particular thing amongst the board, you're welcome to attend.
Can they put something on your agenda?
That was going to be my question. If the planning and zoning commission is going to have discussions with the Board of Supervisors about something in an ordinance and the planning and zoning commission agenda has that on it, does Tammy need to create an agenda for the Board of Supervisors' attendance?
Notice and an agenda, tentative agenda, yes. For them, for them.
That was kind of my question, and that's why I didn't want to hear your answer.
Yeah, they don't, they don't cover both entities because you're a separate public board, separate government board. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
Again, what's the overriding principle?
Openness.
Openness, right? We want to make sure everybody knows, because, you know, the reality is the majority of the people in the public may not have interest in specific items, but there will definitely be people who are interested in specific items from different areas. And they should be apprised of what's going on. So if you're doing something that affects my real estate in, say for instance, Plum Creek, you know, I may want to attend that, you know, I want to find out what's going on. You know, I think that's what we owe the public and not think, I know, that's what we owe the public, the ability for them to attend and see what you, what your decisions are, what they're based on. Best practices, again, suggested by the Iowa Public Information Board, email a copy to members of the public who request it. I think we do that, right? And also place it on our website. I think we also do that, correct? Again, the posting of the 24 hours preceding a meeting where it's more like, where the public knows and is more likely to be able to access it. And if at all possible, which I don't think it is for here since we post it in the courthouse, if it is all possible, continuous access would be preferred. I think looking at it from the standpoint of post it in a public spot for people who want to come in and look at it when the courthouse is open, and then we also put it on our website to kind of cover that if people are not able to come into the courthouse to access the actual posting. The agenda, what needs to be included? It can't be bare bones. It obviously has to be reasonably sufficient to alert interested people as to the subject matter that's going to be considered. There was a Supreme Court opinion that the board just simply had approval of old minutes, old business, new business, and that was it. That obviously is not sufficient. So, you know, the in quotes there, that came from a Supreme Court case. And clearly is not sufficient. You know, the details, again, would be a case-by-case situation. But I think most people can understand, okay, what do I have to give? I think we discussed this a couple of years ago as to, say for instance, drainage matters. You know, we should let them know where the property is as far as the drainage issue you're going to discuss. You know, and that should be enough to reasonably advise people out there that may want to come or may be affected by the subject matter that you're going to consider. Emergency items, I mentioned before. If something comes up at a meeting, all right? You know, there's something that comes up that's time-sensitive and there's absolutely no way to postpone that decision, then it is possible for you to make a decision on that, discuss the topic and make a decision on it. So there are exceptions, however, I caution you because that's very, as I mentioned earlier, narrowly construed. Most situations you deal with could be postponed, at least for enough to give 24 hours notice. May require you guys to come in on a Wednesday or a Thursday or whatever. We've done that just on a very few occasions over the course of the time that I've been here. But generally speaking, most things can be tabled and put on the next meeting's agenda. Okay? And as the bottom there of the agenda must specifically state any issues the board intends to discuss in open or closed session. The minutes. Our minutes, the minimum should have the date, time and place of the meeting, the members present and the action taken at any meeting. Votes by each member must be noted individually, unless it's a unanimous vote and everybody votes at that time, you can put by unanimous decision. Minutes become public record as soon as they are complete, not at approval. So as soon as they're completed, they're public record. It must be published as required by law in the appropriate newspaper. And then I think we also publish them on our website, do we not? That doesn't satisfy the requirement of the newspaper, but it's just an added convenience for our citizens.
Can I, um. Go ahead. Planning and zoning commission decisions, we usually publish just a decision by like the Board of Adjustment or the planning and zoning commission, but we do not necessarily publish the minutes.
So does the minutes have, well, the publish, is it the date, time of the meeting? The decision made and the votes?
Right.
Yeah. So in essence, it's a minute.
Right. But it's not.
Do you have someone taking minutes, that information down?
It's in a, it's in a book, and if somebody wants it, I can certainly.
Right, right.
I do not.
But will you publish the decisions, you know, the date, time, the decision made at the meeting and who voted in favor or against or unanimous? Okay. Yeah.
So on the completed minutes, does that mean approved minutes?
No.
No.
No, no, no. They're public record when they're completed.
So currently we publish after they're approved, don't we, on our website?
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
If they ask for it.
If someone comes in after the board meeting and says, I want a copy of those minutes, and as soon as Tammy has completed those, she gives a copy. Now they're on approved. And then the approved minutes then are the ones that we publish on the website.
That's loose.
Closed sessions. There are 12 subsections that allow for a meeting to be closed. As it references the tops, they're only to be held by two-thirds vote of the members of the body or all members present, and only after citing one of the following reasons. To review or discuss a record which is required or authorized by state or federal law to be kept confidential as a condition to retain federal funding. That might be EMA, that might be EMS, that might be things that where you have to know in particular what's the requirements regarding confidentiality pertaining to federal law so that we do not lose funding from the federal government. To discuss application for patent. A lot of these, it covers all, all of the boards, so some of these won't apply. Uh, but, uh, there, there are no less. To discuss strategy with counsel on matters that are currently or may eminently be in litigation. Uh, that's, uh, subsection C. To discuss contents of licensing examination. Initiate disciplinary investigation or proceeding if the bodies involved with the licensing are examining. Guide hearings, um, whether or not to suspend a student. Uh, but now, this is a little different than what we're typically faced with, okay, for the schools. If the parent wants the meeting to remain open, it shall be open. If you go down to, uh, I, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual, say, for instance, someone, uh, in the employ of the county, the individual must request a closed session. Uh, so the powers of the individual in those two different types of situations, uh, are opposite, okay? So if you're, you know, evaluating the professional competency of, of an employee, uh, they have to request that that be in closed session, I skipped one there. Uh, well, actually, to discuss a decision to be rendered in a contested case, doesn't apply to you, you don't do contested cases. Uh, but to avoid disclosure of specific law enforcement matters, uh, which if disclosed would enable law violators to avoid detection or facilitate disregard for requirements imposed by law. There's my sheriff over there and, uh, Lori. Uh, those are the two, both subsection G and H deals with law enforcement. Okay, so law enforcement, um, investigation reports and those types of things are confidential with the exception of the date and time of the offense and the limited facts and circumstances surrounding the offense, which are considered public record.
Do you have to inform an individual that they have the right to go into closed session?
You should.
I think that.
You should. Courtesy.
Yeah.
Ignorance of the law is no excuse, but I think, you know, just a reminder, hey, this is gonna be an open session unless you specifically request it being closed.
Okay.
Um, I think that's just common courtesy. And then to discuss the purchase or sale of real estate. That'll come up periodically throughout all of your tenure, okay? Um, you know, if we're looking at doing something to, uh, whether it be to purchase or sell real estate, those things could be in closed session. However, different than the other minutes and recordings of a closed session, this closed session, uh, minutes and recording, uh, are open as soon as, uh, the transaction is dropped or completed. So the public can have access to the discussions held in closed session, because the only requirement of that is to not give competitors an opportunity to outbid us or do something that would, that would, um, basically prejudice us, so, uh, that's the reason for it, it's not for any other purpose, and they're available, that's available to the public upon the conclusion. Now, realize that that may be a year and a half down the road. Those minutes and the recordings only have to be kept for a minimum of one year. So you may have to retain those, uh, closed session records longer than what is required by, um, chapter twenty, or section twenty-one point five. To further, K, to discuss records concerning security procedures and emergency preparedness for the protection of the government and the government's employees, any visitors that come into the courthouse uh, that are considered under the care and protection of the government and its property, to discuss patient care quality and process improvement, um, initiatives in a meeting, uh, of the public hospital obviously doesn't apply, or other sections, the audit code may permit a government agency to close a meeting. So there is really one other section, uh, one other chapter that applies to the county government that's not listed there, but is, uh, or does qualify as a meeting that would be capable of being closed, and that's under chapter, uh, chapter twenty, in section twenty point seventeen, sub-three. Exempts, exempts negotiations, uh, strategy meetings of public employers or employee organizations mediation, and the deliberative process of arbitrators and the collective bargaining process. Okay, uh, that is specifically exempted from the open meetings, however, the first two sessions in which the two sides present their initial bargaining positions, positions shall be open to the public. Okay, so when you get into the deliberation of it, that's when it can be closed, but the first two sessions where you're sharing the positions are considered open meetings. Procedures to be used during closed sessions, um, no additional topics other than what's on the agenda for the closed session can be discussed. The session must be recorded and detailed minutes must be taken. Um, I've mentioned here, obviously, earlier, uh, members, um, that the, the, the recording and the detailed minutes must be kept for at least one year, I think, you know, basically, I assume we keep them forever, um, you know, for as long as, uh, we can continue to, to maintain the storage capacity for those types of things. Uh, members who would otherwise have access to the closed session, they get access to the closed session recording and minutes, so if, um, you know, you, you wanna go back and, and see what the minutes or the recordings have, you know, and you guys were capable of being in closed session, you have access to it. Okay, so you're not worried, you don't have to worry about, well, once they're closed, you know, and they're in the auditor's office, no one can access it. If you would have had the availability to be part of that closed session, you can get access to the recording minutes. Uh, but, and I think you guys all know this, uh, final action has to be done in open session, okay? So, you know, you have the discussion, um, and then when you are in a situation where the discussion is done, uh, you close, you open the session, and then you make the decision in open session.
How much of the closed session can be discussed in the open session?
None.
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 That's by my opinion, so you cannot have any information that was shared in closed session determined in open session.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct, the decision is made in, uh, the decision only is made in open session. Anything in closed is subject to, uh, non-disclosure, uh, rules and, and laws associated with.
So there's, there's no reference can be made.
There's no reference that it was in closed session, due to the discussion in closed session.
But you can't reference anything in closed session in open session?
You can't say, because of information X, Y, Z that we got.
Right, yeah.
Which subsequently happened in closed session.
Yeah, right, correct.
And I, yeah, I know what your point is there, um, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it happened, and, uh, back when you're making the decision on, um, the change, uh, for the wages of the employee. You guys discussed in closed session with your employment counsel, your employment attorney, um, those things, and, you know, you, on numerous cases, we can't share that information, okay? But, you know, and, and, you know, there's, 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 uh, requirements for them. I mean, the reason you have closed session is, in some way, shape, or form, you know, that information could harm the, the government body.
Right.
Right? That's why it's closed, otherwise it's all open.
Yeah, I think what Roger's referring to is conversations about the pipeline.
Yeah.
Simply.
That they had in closed session, and that stays in closed session.
It stays in closed session. It stays in closed session even when you're outside of the, the.
Correct, this, this is the point that I'm trying to get across to everybody, that we have to be very careful what we say to the public, about what we learn in closed session.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, the most important thing to remember is nothing in the law requires you to have a closed session. If you feel comfortable discussing a potential real estate purchase in open, you can do that. Okay, um, you know, and again, gets back to that if it's ambiguous, if you don't know, if you're, obviously, you can ask me, that also provides some protection, I'll get into that a little bit. But, uh, you know, nothing requires you to do that. You know, if the board is, is comfortable with discussing something that could provide competitors, so to speak, uh, an opportunity to jump in and, and get ahead of us, you can do that, nothing requires it. All right, so now open records, okay, you guys can work that over here. Except for the ones that have, uh, committees or, or, um, a board subject to the open, open meetings. Open records. All government bodies, officials, and employers are covered by chapter twenty-two. This is, uh, as I said earlier, the, the open records. Uh, there must be, the, the lawful custodian is the person who's going to be covered, uh, by the disclosure of open records. Uh, record is a broad term, uh, it is, uh, defined liberally. The term record includes all documents, tape, or other information stored or preserved in any medium of or belonging to a government, governmental body. Also includes all records relating to the investment of public funds. Uh, it also includes electronic communications, uh, such as emails, websites, or belongs. Okay? Who has the right to examine public records? Everyone, anyone and everyone. Uh, we, I mean, there's, if someone comes and asks for it, you gotta give it, if it's a public record to them. When you give it to them, or how long it takes you to give it to them, depends on the record, and we'll get into that. But it doesn't matter what they're gonna use it for, they're entitled to, to have that. There are two exceptions. Um, well, actually, before the two exceptions, and we can't, for instance, store public records in a private facility, like a storage warehouse or something, where, where are the access court, uh, clerk, or, uh, recorder's office documents stored, or they.
My office.
All of them are.
The only thing in the, in the basement is a fee book, well, that would just be the money they took in for those documents, so, yeah, they're all there.
So, you know, in order to, uh, try and avoid public records, we can't store them offsite and say, well, we don't have them in the courthouse, we don't have access to them, we have to get those, if we are storing them offsite, then we have to have and get access to them and provide those public records to the public. To exceptions, governmental bodies can control the terms and conditions of the examination of non-confidential records stored within geographic computer databases. Um, and they can establish or must establish reasonable rates for the examination of these records, uh, because those are a little bit more complicated to get, and then data processing software, which I'll get into in a little bit. When do they need to be available for public examination? So, we can provide and must provide records, uh, however they request them. Uh, they can come in, I know that you probably have people come in, Karen, in your office and see your records in the back. Uh, those, the time for that is nine to noon and one to four, Monday through Friday. Um, they can come in and view the record, photocopy, or, uh, you can't photocopy unless you ask the, the person who's the custodian to photocopy, but you can take pictures of it, um, and, uh, view them publicly during those times.
Can I interject at this point? Um, we have the, uh, naturalization books that we took from the clerk of court, but we are not, they're not in my custody, I'm just holding them on the shelf.
Right.
I can't certify that document like I can mortgage and make a certified copy of that. It, uh, that said, it was either going to bring them to my office, or they tie in with the birth, death, and marriage, or put them over in the historical building. Uh, are those records that are free for all, I mean, they're really not mine to monitor, but I do keep them, so.
And so you wouldn't be considered the legal custodian of local court books, so they'd have to access those through the clerk of court. You have no idea whether or not they're, they're potentially confidential. Uh, so, yeah, those types of records would have to go through the legal custodian. Once again, getting to that, um, point I talked about earlier, that if, you know, you're, you're hiring or have someone who's storing those records for you, or the county's doing it, um, they, they still have to provide access, but the legal custodian of those have to, have to be the one to provide access. I don't know if they're confidential or not, I mean.
Yeah.
But. So getting back on here, the most common confidential records, uh, I'm saying the most common because there are seventy-five subsections regarding confidential records. I'm not gonna go through all seventy-five, many of them won't apply to, to any of the, uh, the public officials, um, in the county, uh, so I will hit upon the ones that do. I would say that as custodians of, of records, public records, you should be familiar with this code section, okay, it's, um, it's important to know twenty-two point seven, because if something doesn't fall within twenty-two point seven, which is a subsection dealing with all of the, the confidential records, uh, then it's public record, more than likely, okay? And I'll get into that definition in a moment. Uh, so, most common confidential records are medical records, uh, trade secrets protected by law, uh, obviously, in my realm, the work product of an attorney related to litigation or against the public body, peace officers, investigative reports, we mentioned this in the, the, earlier. Um, when you're dealing with, um, investigative reports, we can release as far as, uh, public records, the date, time, specific location, and the media facts and circumstances surrounding the crime. The, uh, and we do that typically by press release, uh, we've done, um, many times. Uh, everything else in that investigative report is confidential. And, you know, realistically, and I did, I got into debate with, uh, another attorney regarding whether we can ever release them, my opinion is that we can't. Um, but generally speaking, I don't have a problem with it, because usually down the road, once we're done with what we do, uh, then typically we'll get requests, uh, for, um, law enforcement investigative reports involving an accident or personal injury type of lawsuits. You know, they're gonna be able to get them, and I think we've talked about this, for instance, and so you guys know, a lot of times, I like the idea of a subpoena, because we can release those by court order. That protects us. But generally, I think we have a pretty good communication back and forth when there's something that's, you know, kind of questionable, um, in that regard. Appraisal information concerning sale or purchase of property for public purposes prior to the announcement of the project. Uh, so in that situation, they'd be confidential. Certain personnel information such as age, race, sex, address, and social security numbers, that's, that's, you know, kind of common sense. Uh, telephone, uh, numbers, reasons for sick leave held in confidential personal records of government employees, but does not include the dates and times of the use of sick leave or vacation. Information that if released would cause the loss of federal funding, I mentioned that earlier too. Um, there may be a situation where the federal government says this is confidential, uh, record, if we release it, uh, it could jeopardize our federal funding. Uh, information submitted, which is not required by law and submitted, the kind of the catch-all, uh, from someone outside the government, and the lawful custodian could reasonably, those persons would be discouraged from submitting. Uh, you know, like, um, for instance, like a whistleblower type of situation, uh, something like that. Uh, you don't want to discourage the person or the public from bringing that to the attention of, of the government. Um, and then in situations where it's possible, we could redact the information that is, uh, going to protect that person's identity, uh, but yet still, um, provide the remaining portion of what their report or information is. Was amended in two thousand eleven, uh, to include, um, as far as public records, the name and detailed information about compensation of an employee, uh, including any written agreement about terms of employment. Um, so anything of value given to an employee, including paid benefit, paid benefits, vacations, severance payment, retirement benefits. Employment dates, positions held, educational background, previous employment, and the fact that the employee was discharged as a result of a disciplinary action, so those would be considered, um, information that we can provide and can be made public. Uh, and then there's, uh, several exemptions that were added for employment security. Public rec, record law, uh, allows release of confidential information when ordered by court, uh, by the lawful custodian of the records or by another person to be authorized to release such information. Like a subpoena, okay? Uh, or court order. So in situations where we have confidential records and the person has pursued some sort of legal action, and the court says you have to disclose those, um, then at that point in time, they can be capable of being disclosed. There's usually a process that goes, that happens in that type of situation. The records are disclosed to the court only, and then the judge reviews those records to see, uh, depending on what the nature of the lawsuit is, um, whether or not they can be disclosed to the parties. Obviously, if there's a legal dispute, uh, sometimes this comes up where there is a settlement. The, uh, uh, in, in dealing with litigation and lawsuits, obviously, that fits within the confidential records provision of the code of chapter twenty-two. Uh, so, if there's, uh, a lawsuit or legal dispute, including an allegation that the entity had violated a rule or statute, after the dispute is resolved, the government body must prepare a summary that indicates the identity of the parties involved, the nature of the dispute, and the terms of the settlement. Okay, so most of the time, the documents that are in the litigation or the lawsuit, um, as far as, say, for instance. as, say for instance, mediation, mediation is confidential by, by court, you know, and oftentimes in mediation settlements are reached. So, those types of documents are confidential, maintain their confidential status forever. But we would be required then to summarize what they say, okay? So summarize what the identities of the parties involved, oftentimes that's already known, and the nature of the dispute, the terms of the settlement. And this is, this is interesting, we're talking about minutes, before they're approved, they're still public record. There is an exception in situations where, let's say for instance, I'm creating something for the board, rough draft of something, and someone says, hey, I know you're creating this document for the board, I wanna have access to it. Probably, for example, because I'm an attorney and its work product is automatically confidential, but, let's say I'm not, let's say it's Doug, or Karen, or Donna, creating that document, and someone requests it, at that point that we're creating it, it's not, it's not open records. It's not, it's not considered something that has to be disclosed. Could be, okay? But if we submit it to you for your evaluation and review, and I'm gonna take me out of that, because, you know, even in that situation, sometimes it could be considered confidential.
Like, we could use a handbook as an example.
Right. The handbook for an example.
Or a draft, draft change to the handbook.
In her position right there, if they request it, she doesn't have to disclose it, but if she gives it to you for your review, then it's, it's a, an open record, okay?
After we agree to it, or?
No.
Just as long?
As soon as you get it for review, then it's open.
Okay, so we agree with it or not, or try to amend it, or say, okay, bring it back?
No, that's fine.
Doesn't, doesn't.
Yeah, that, that, that may qualify as, if you're discussing it in amongst three or more of you, then it'd be an open meeting, you'd have to put that on agenda, but we're dealing now just with the records as to when they have to be disclosed, because we still have to have the ability to kind of, you know, just free-form, free-thought documents to create, and so just our initial rough draft containing misspellings and grammatical errors and, and information that at least provides something to build off of is not considered an open record until we give it to you to review it. At that point in time, it's open.
So if we started a process to make changes to the handbook, and it was in the process for three months, and, and then it got emailed to the board on Friday for the previous Tuesday coming up, Friday is when it would be public, not two months before, correct?
Well, as long as he says, as long as we're reviewing it in public.
Once we get it.
Once you get it.
Yeah.
But I, I, I'm gonna get to the last thing here shortly. Remember, what's the overriding principle, openness? So if someone, say for instance, a document's being created, you know, a policy by Derek in the IT department, you know, and he's coming up with thoughts and ideas as far as what he would like to see the county do regarding our IT department, or regarding, you know, our, the security of our IT. When he creates it, and he's amending it and approving it, and it isn't in something that he's comfortable to provide to the five of you for your review, if someone comes and asks him for, hey, what you're working on, I wanna see it, he doesn't have to share that with them. Now, should he? Well, I mean, I don't see why not. I don't see why that wouldn't be shared, because as long as the person who's requesting it knows, hey, this is a work in process, this is not something that's been presented to anybody to make a decision on, there shouldn't be any hesitation for him to, to share that. But is he required to do so under chapter twenty-two? No. Once he gets it and he's comfortable with the document, says, okay, you know, I fixed everything, and this is kind of where I think we should go, open to further suggestions and discussions, and submits it to the five of you for review, or, you know, Tammy to send to the five of you, or whatever, at that point in time, he's required to submit that to anybody that requests, or provide that to anybody that requests that record. Does that clear that up a little bit more?
Mm-hmm.
As long as you have it, regardless of whether it's in final form, it needs to be disclosed. And we had that not too long ago regarding, you know, one that was redlined, okay? And you guys have gotten it, so, yeah, it's open record, give it to them. This is the timeframe. Basically, most of the records requests can be satisfied immediately or very soon after the request, you know, they want a copy of a, of a deed, something that happens regularly, just, you know, copy happens probably that day, if not the next day, depending on the request. If there's a valid reason for delay, and it's reasonable, should not exceed ten business days, or in no event twenty calendar days, that's the deadline, basically. Records, bottom line there, I'm gonna further go into that, record custodian should work with the requester to ensure that the correct records are released in as timely a manner as possible. And I think we talked about this during one of our department head meetings, the best way to, to handle public record requests would be communication with the person requesting it. Oftentimes, you know, that can, that can really alleviate any potential delays that may go beyond the twenty days, you know, in a situation where depending on the records, it's very difficult to meet that. Communication with the person requesting it, they'll probably say, okay, you know, get it to me as soon as you can afterwards. As long as there's no indication that there's purposeful delay, I think communication is extremely important. Communication solves a lot. And then there's, the IPID actually, or our public information board actually gives kind of a, a four-point suggestion as far as best practices. When you receive the public records request, contact the requester to acknowledge that you received it, and provide them with a probable timeline for returning, unless it's gonna be immediate, you know, unless it's, your reply to them is, here it is. Make additional contact in the event of a potential delay to discuss possibilities to process the request in a timely manner. Work diligently to retrieve and release the records, and release the records as they are ready, unless the Requestor has asked that the records be compiled and then released again, okay? So if it's a multiple-part request, as soon as you got one ready, then it goes, unless the person says, I want it all in one, okay? Databases. A lot of what we do is, are, you know, our, the information is held in databases. The software that we use is confidential, it's subject to proprietary laws, but the records contained in the database can be open or a combination of open and closed, depending on what they have in there. Records cannot be withheld because they contain both non-confidential and confidential material. So in other words, in a situation where there is both confidential and non-confidential material, the record can be redacted to remove the confidential material, the, and then release what is actually public records. Supervision and fees, obviously, the records, if a person is viewing the records, there is a requirement that the person be supervised, we don't want people destroying, changing, or somewhat manipulating our public records, so they can be supervised. That would be an in-person, as I mentioned earlier, an in-person notebook review, they have to have the ability to do that. If it's a, a request made by writing, telephone, or electronic means, then obviously we'll have to provide that to them, subject to a reasonable, reasonable fees for that, and I'll get into that in a section, a second. But some people may have an idea that, well, if someone's asking it orally, do I have to comply? Yes, an oral request is sufficient. However, best practices would be that if someone is asking it, to be, asking for a record over the phone, it, it might be best to say, hey, you know, I'm gonna put, especially if it's complicated, if it's, hey, I need this deed, or I need, you know, this document, and it's a simple request, not a problem. If it's, if it's complicated, it may be best to try and get that in writing, just so it's clear, you know, explain in person, I'll work on it, I think I know what you want, but, you know, if you can provide that in email so that I know exactly what you want, so I'm not, you know, I'm not providing you information that you don't want.
To, to your point there, if someone comes in and asks for records of DD four, there's thousands and thousands of pages, do we have the right to say, what specifically do you want about DD four, I'm not gonna mail you tens of thousands of pages?
Well, you, do you have the right? I think that's what you, the, the best practices would be to narrow it down. Do you want?
Right.
A hundred thousand pages of all of DD four, whatever it may be, I don't know, use DD four then, for example? Or do you want it limited to a certain time or a certain type, so that, as I was mentioning it before, if you can narrow it down, you may eliminate a potential belief that, you know, you're, you're just trying to provide all of this document, all of these documents to try and hide something. Try and narrow it down, but the person may want a hundred thousand pages. In that situation, I think your, your, your communication with that individual is going to be valuable to say, okay, this is gonna take a lot, a lot more time than what we have available, so, you know, bear with me, we'll get to you over the course of time. But I think that communication is the key. So, I mean, if someone comes in and says, I want all of those, yeah, I mean, they're entitled to them. But in those situations, if it's a lot of documents, you know, maybe the, a combination of, okay, you can come in and look at them if it's available for inspection, I don't know, sometimes they're on the computer, computer, and it's a little bit more difficult. But yeah, the bottom line is, the record is open, but most people aren't gonna wanna have that, they have a specific thing that they're looking for, and something that applies to them, and, you know, by communication and conversation you can narrow it down.
Sometimes they just wanna, a whole bunch of records that they don't even know what they want.
Right, right. And I don't know that we have anything, I don't know, you know, I guess the, the, you know, looking at it from the standpoint of complying with it, I think it's imperative to try and discuss with them, okay, let's, do you want a hundred thousand pages of documents?
Do we have the right to say to them, let's narrow this down to what your issue is?
Sure. I mean, we need right, I mean, communication is open to everybody, and there's no, but can you say that I'm not going to give that to you?
No.
Yeah. No. But the reasonableness here, you have to look at it from the standpoint of, in those situations, you better have some documented communication as to what exactly the person is looking for. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but it, it's difficult for somebody in the greenage room to give that much records without specific details, 'cause some of those records are handwritten way back when.
Hmm, they're public record.
They're public record, I'm not just, but it's, you'd have to run each one of them through, scan each one, 'cause there's no, they're not on a computer.
Well, we get to the next document where fees are associated with that, I mean, you can charge a fee for that, if someone's gonna want and takes, say for instance, one employee multiple days to do that, then they're gonna have to pay the fees, because the actual cost of that is something that can be charged.
Right.
You can't say, no, you can't have them, but, you know, in order to devote this much time and attention to this, to this request would be this amount of money.
So do you tell them that ahead of time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, you should, because you don't wanna tag them with the bill afterwards and, and cause a dispute that way. Mention the safeguarding records, you know, generally, it's probably not a concern, but in situations where that is a concern, then you have the right to supervise them, you know, as soon as they're placed in the offices or somewhere else, if necessary, for the person to view those records, and provide them a reasonable number of copies, again, you know, subject to a fee. Now, most simple things probably aren't going to, to require a request for, for fees, it can be done for free, but in, in many situations, the fee is warranted and is capable of being charged.
Would one of those situations, like if, you know, someone says they wanna come in and look at some record, or they want, you know, to see some records, is it, you know, one of those situations where you say, you can come in and look at the records, but if you want, you know, copies of them, that it's gonna cost a fee?
Yes.
But it would be free for them to come in and look at?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, if, you know, I, I think, as I've mentioned, Karen, I mean, I, we talked oftentimes during tours, people come in and look at, you know, past deeds and, and, you know, all the things that are in their office, it's a treasure trove of, of neat documents from the eighteen hundreds, you know, right back there, and they open them up and look at them, no fee assessed. But yeah, the, the reality is, once you start copying things for them, then obviously that is money that is being spent, or there's an expense associated with that that we should be able to recover.
What if, what if they come in and ask to review the records that were free, but what if it's to the point where they need, someone needs to be there with them to supervise?
Yeah, um, you know, you, you have a situation where, you know, if there's the, the requirement due to the records that they be supervised, then a fee can be associated with that, it has to be applied uniformly, you know, everyone in that situation has to have the same type of fee, and it has to be actual cost. Remember, I mentioned earlier, you know, employee benefits and those types of things are not things that can be covered, but in situations where it's gonna require someone to supervise them, which we have an obligation to protect the records, that fee can be something that can be charged to recoup some of that loss.
We, we've gotten requests, and I've, I've stocked it, beginning, you know, title companies, or, you know, someone wanting to buy a house, and has there been anything recorded since this deed has been conveyed to this individual, and what are they, well, I don't do that, I'm not certified to a search, because I'm not an abstractor, I feel that the county should not be liable if something's missed on that, it's just opening us up for liability.
And you have no obligation to do that.
I have no obligation, and so that, that, right. I'm wondering, should I put that, I've seen a couple recorders that put that on their webpage, we do not certify real estate searches, because that falls right into this, I wanna copy, but then can you look, look, look? And I said, no, I'm sorry, I don't, we don't.
Yeah, I'm always in favor of, you know, providing those things.
Absolutely, you haven't gotten any of them, right.
Well, no, providing that information, saying, my office does not, do you have to know, but I mean, you know, any type of information that provides, that these types of services, primarily just to eliminate people, you know, if they, if they go to that and they see, oh, they do not do title searches, you know, they're not gonna, well, some probably will, but it might eliminate some of the unnecessary calls to say, hey, we don't do that.
I welcome that.
Those, those, the, the title or deeds are public records, and we'll provide that, but you do not have to search. If they give you, I want all of the deeds between this state and this state, okay, that's different.
Yeah.
But are you gonna certify title? Absolutely not, that's an abstractor's job, well, actually, an attorney would do that.
Right, exactly, so we, we make that clear, also, I'll, I'll tell them, they can come in and then look at all the records they wish to determine that themselves, but that is supposed to be a public record search.
Yeah, and that's, you know, basically, well, the abstractor does.
Right, so.
She comes in and looks at all of those, and they make the certification, but you are not obligated to do that.
And you've been, we've been asked kind of it over the years, and I've, I've stocked it, correct?
You know, this is fulfillment of a request, maybe made contingent upon payment of a fee and estimated expenses, we talked about that, but they cannot exceed the actual cost of providing the service. And as I mentioned, it doesn't cover employee benefits, depreciation, maintenance, electricity, or insurance associated with the administration of the office.
I got another quick question to the whole, you know, coming in to look at the documents and stuff for free, you know, and they say that it's come, they're coming in for, you know, a quick search, well, then it turns into three, four hours, at what point, you know, can they say, well, this is gonna cost a fee then?
Well, it depends on what service is required of the custodian.
Right.
And Karen's office, I don't think you necessarily supervise them.
We, a geologist would fit the bill there, and we welcome, you know, anyone to come in and look, but they can be there all day sometimes, days at a time, because they come from our state, we just, you know, we go back to the vault and make sure we're supervising that things aren't, I mean, you know, the book is, is protected and things like that, but it can be a whole week.
But in situations, again, case by case scenario, in situations where because of the record, although it be in public, is susceptible to, you know, someone wanting to change it, and you have to. and you have to have a supervisor there, supervision of the person there, they have to be there for an extended period of time. At that point in time, the custodian can charge a fee for that. Uh, because of the, you know, they're not able to do the county business.
Right.
Because they're supervising this public records, uh, search.
Right. And at what point would they say that, that, you know, okay, if this goes on any longer, we're gonna have to charge you, kind of thing?
I mean, it gets back to the communication.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, if, if it's going to be longer than this period of time, and, you know, we're probably gonna have to charge a fee and this is what the fee will be. You know, they have the right to ask, okay, itemize that fee out, so I know what it's based upon, because it has to be actual cost for providing that service. Uh, data manipulation, uh, this deals with data processing software, and it kinda goes along with what you were saying, alright? Um, to a certain extent. I know it's not necessarily a data processing software. But if, if it's necessary to separate a public record from data processing software, you know, that's something that the county or the government has to bear the cost of separation of that public record. However, the amount charged for access to a public record shall not be more than required to recover direct publication costs, including but not limited to editing, compilation, and media production costs incurred by the government body in developing the data processing software, uh, and preparing the data processing software for transfer to the person. Uh, you know, I don't know that that's something that's going to come up very often, uh, because we're not preparing or, or, uh, providing the data processing software for the transfer to the person.
Well, we just started. We're doing it, Zillow and Data, American Data LLC, every month. We are FTP site, Derek is helping create that, and, uh, they go out and pull that electronically from my site once a month, and they already judge it.
Yeah, um, but we're not providing the, the data processing software to them. I mean, we're providing the information.
You have to make it correct, correct.
And then what you had mentioned earlier, the government body shall request to provide documentation explaining and justify the amount charged. So how did we get to the amount charged? What's the actual cost? We have to be able to justify that. Penalties. Your penalties for violation of either chapter twenty-one or chapter twenty-two, the sunshine laws. Um, first of all, I mentioned earlier that it can be done in civil court. So they can file a lawsuit agai- against the government body or against the individual elected official or, or public official regarding the violation. The court can issue an injunction, uh, ordering a government body to comply. Can assess damages from one, minimum of one hundred dollars to a maximum of five hundred dollars. Uh, order that the government body or the, uh, official, uh, pay the attorney's fees and the court costs uh, for the person who instigated the lawsuit, uh, or initiated the lawsuit, not instigated, initiated the lawsuit, uh, and remove repeat violators from office. Repeat violators means a person within their term of service, so now we're talking elected officials, within their term of service. Doesn't necessarily apply just to elected officials, but I'm using that as an example. Um, you know, so, uh, I'm found to have violated the, uh, um, open meetings or open records. Uh, and I, the court assesses damage. During my four-year term, if I'm evicted, if I'm, uh, if it's determined by the court that I have, uh, done it again, I can be, or shall be removed from office. There's no discretion. Uh, and that applies to every one of the, um, the people in this room. Uh, so repeat offenders just means two strikes and you're out. Basically, two strikes and you're out. Uh, if you are knowingly participating in a violation, it increases the damage amount between one thousand and twenty-five hundred. I mentioned this also earlier, ignorance of the law is not a defense, okay? So you can't go, uh, into the court and say, well, I didn't know that was the law. I didn't know that that would be a violation, uh, because everyone's presumed to know the law. But damages will not be assessed against violator, against, uh, officials who voted against the violation. So if it's a, for instance, the board of supervisors, if it's, I'm really the only one that applies in that situation. Um, uh, you know, if you have, uh, someone wanting it to go into closed session and you vote against it, you say that shouldn't be in closed session, then you would be immune from, from damages in that situation. Uh, or if, you know, you're in a closed session and, you know, all of a sudden, you know, the rules are not being followed and additional information is discussed, if you get up and leave the room at that point in time, uh, so you refuse to participate in that violation, uh, you'd be immune from any damages. Uh, or if you've engaged in efforts to resist the violation, tried to prevent it, stop it, uh, or thwart it in any way, uh, or relied upon a formal opinion from the attorney general or from the county attorney, um, then you'd be, um, you would not be subject to damages. Um, one note, uh, because oftentimes, you know, this happens, a quick call to the attorney, hey, you know, this is what the subject is, are we okay? You'll notice it has to be in writing, okay? So that opinion has to be in writing. Um, spur of the moment things are pretty difficult, uh, but in order to be, and it often happens, I'm not saying don't do it, because I can probably guide you through many situations. But in order to be exempt from the damages, it has to be in writing, okay? Uh, because of, uh, potential misunderstanding, miscommunication, or misinterpretation of what is being said. Um, or, the last one, they added that one to, uh, if you are getting advice from the Iowa Public Information Board. So what is the Iowa Public Information Board? Um, it is, uh, something that, as I mentioned, was created to make it easier to resolve disputes that involve chapters twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, makes it more efficient for people, uh, cost-effective, it's informal. It's an administrative body, uh, and, um, you know, provides, um, basically free legal resource for citizens and government officials. So it doesn't just apply to citizens. Government officials can ask for their, their advice, uh, on different topics and different things. the last sentence there, the board is also one of the few such agencies in the nation with the authority to not only advise, but to enforce the safe sunshine laws. So within the scopes of chapters twenty-two and chapters, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, the Iowa Public Information Board has the power to enforce that law. Um, and, and the reinforcements are what we're going to get into now, reinforcements abilities. First of all, it's a nine-member board. Uh, no more than three shall be representatives of the media, and not more than three shall be representatives, uh, of cities, counties, or, or other local governments. Um, they're staggered four-years, four-year terms, uh, and it is authorized to have at least one employee and attorney who says as executive director. Uh, so they have an attorney onboard who is their executive director. Important to recognize, it's an independent agency, so it's, uh, an independent agency free of, uh, any, uh, potential influence, uh, by any, any county or citizens. They're on their own.
Who appoints them then?
The governor.
Then it's political already.
Well, independent in the sense of, yeah.
It has its balance.
Yeah. The, um, it's appointed by the governor, but, um, they're confirmed by the center. So what are they authorized to do? Under twenty-three point six, to issue advice or declaratories with orders with the force of law regarding applicability of the open records and open meetings law. Um, to receive and investigate complaints alleging violation, violations of the laws and seek resolution through informal assistance, mediation, and settlement. Uh, if it cannot be, if the complaint cannot be resolved informally, uh, and they believe with probable cause that a violation has occurred, they do have the power to prosecute government bodies in a contested case proceeding, which is under seventeen A, uh, administrative, uh, procedures. They're also, they also can issue subpoenas to investigate complaints and prosecute cases, issue orders with the force of law to require compliance with sunshine laws, and offer training in chapters twenty-one and twenty-two to government bodies to disseminate information to the public, and to submit an annual report to the governor and legislature making recommendations relating to access to government functions. They do not have the power over the judiciary, and they do not have the power over the legislative branches or the governor and governor's office. Um, so they're limited in that capacity. And they are limited to addressing issues involving the sunshine laws, chapters twenty-one and twenty-two. Any complaint issued has to be within sixty days of the alleged violation of those laws. Uh, any declaratories issued, declaratory orders issued by the board um, determining the applicability of the open meetings or records law have the force of law. Okay, so if they issue a declaratory order, it has to be filed. Amendments, chapter twenty-one, twenty-two, provide protection. This is what I mentioned earlier. Uh, so if you're relying on written advice from the, either the IPib, uh, the attorney general, or me, you're covered. Uh, but they can assess damages, void action taken in violation of the open meetings laws and require a government body or official to take an appropriate remedial action. They do not have the power to remove a person from office. What I was mentioning earlier is if they pursue it under civil law in the judiciary, under the district court, the court doesn't have the authority, or doesn't have any discretion to, um, not remove a person who's violated it twice, okay? But the IPib, the Iowa Public Information Board has the power to pursue that remedy in district court if someone has violated or if they found a, a violation uh, to have, uh, happened previously and it's the second one, okay? So even though they don't have it within their power as a board, they have the power to pursue it in district court. And that we've already talked about, just provide some protections, um. And then the last is just a reminder, ambiguity in the consti- in the construction or application of this chapter should be resolved in favor of openness. And then there's, if you're interested, suggested Iowa resources. You know, I strongly encourage everyone to, um, look at the Iowa Public Information Board's website. The information that's on there is, uh, is very good and user-friendly. The, they have frequently asked questions that answer a lot of the questions that would apply to not only the, the board, but also the department heads. And, you know, it's a resource that if a question comes up or a concern comes up, you can go there and usually find the answer. Obviously, you can email the Iowa Public Information Board at that email address or call them. Again, they represent, are there, they field questions and can issue declaratory orders for both public, uh, the public officials or government and, uh, private individuals. Uh, you can come to me, obviously, a lot, lot do, and, uh, we talk about things. Uh, and, uh, that's something, you know, that, that my office is always open to uh, any of the, the supervisors and department heads, if you have a question regarding, um, how these records apply or how these laws apply to your office. The ombudsman, um, Iowa attorney general, um, and Iowa Freedom of Information Council. There's, um, a website there and, and also email address. Uh, and then, obviously, many of those informat- many of those agencies we already know about. Any questions? Yes?
Does the sheriff's office inmate records subject to open records?
Certainly.
Of sheriff's offices inmates records open, did. Can someone call me and say, hey, I want inmate so-and-so's records? Grievances, complaints, disciplinary actions?
That I believe is going to fall under the combined. Some are going to be confidential and some are going to be open records. Um, so, you know, what I can say in that regard right now, I'd like to, to kinda locate to that. Then you see what an inmate record would look like, you see what's involved in that. But, uh, generally speaking, you know, if you look at it from the standpoint of any sensitive information, there would be identifying information, obviously that's gonna be confidential. But, uh, any of the other, uh, issues associated with it could potentially be public records, we'll discuss that later.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Very.
Too much information.
Probably.
I, I got one quick question. So from a supervisor's standpoint, you gave the example of a citizen coming to each of us directly. So let's say, I have a concern and, you know, I went and said, hey, Josh, you know, what do you think about the job our county attorney's doing? And then, you know, I said, I went to Kyle and said, hey, what do you think? Being that I'm the third one in that situation, is that a walking form?
Yeah, cause you're the one asking.
Right, right. So that's, that's why I wanted to.
Yeah, if I'm asking each of you different situation, but yeah, if you're asking other members of the, the, uh, the board, other supervisors.
Yep.
Um, then you're, you're probably looking at a potential.
Right.
For a walking.
But you should always, uh, set the function.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, ask those things.
What, what happens if it's a member of the public, they comes to each of us individually, you know, asking our opinions, but then they go and share what one of us had said to another supervisor? What happens at that point?
That's up to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, seeing, seeing that the beautiful thing about the sunshine laws only applies to government. What the public does out there, they can do that. So, you know, you know, as long as, um, you know, you're not the one that's sharing that back and forth between, you know, the majority of you, uh, you're fine.
Yes, yeah.
So if you look at it from the standpoint of, when you receive that information, well, you know, this supervisor said this, you know, what do you think about that? You know, at that point in time, you can offer your opinion, but realize that, well, a better approach would be, you know what, if that supervisor believes that, that's fine. I'm going to, uh, uh, provide my reasons for what I believe in open session. Uh, you know, anytime you defer to the open meeting and discussing this at that point in time, you're gonna be better off. But again, if it's a member of the public saying, hey, you know, this supervisor believes this, what's your position? You can share your position with them. You can't just call up, well, actually, two or more additional supervisors and say, hey, you know, what's your position on this? And, and how are you gonna vote? Or those types of things, because then you have that rolling core.
Yeah.
But yeah, a member of the public, you know, if they share, because they spoke with, you know, supervisor Jarks or supervisor Stecker, you know, it's, it's, yeah, that's fine. You're just getting information.
Okay.
It's too bad the state doesn't have the same rules.
They do.
They don't use them though.
Sure they do.
Then how do they always know who's gonna vote for what? Comes out of committee and they pretty well know who's.
Well, interesting, you know, there's different rules that apply to, like caucuses and that type of thing. Um, but, uh, yeah, they're not exempt from the open meetings and open records law.
They have parameters leading up to their vote?
Yeah, um, like I said, you know, oftentimes caucuses, uh, uh, are when they, you know, have those discussions and determinations and that. Um, you know, I'm not, uh, not saying that, uh, you know, it warrants a liberty statement, but it's not my concern, because I'm just representing the county.
I mean, we always hear, who's gonna vote how before it comes out of the caucus?
Right. Anything else?
Well, thanks, Doc.
What did you notice that? Possibly put this on the public drive, or we can put it on the public drive somewhere, so we have.
Well, um, the.
Presentation.
Oh, I should have probably brought that up. I did say that Iowa Public Information Board created this.
Yeah, yeah.
Just my notes.
Okay.
Yeah, just my notes and, uh, I mean, I can, I can revise that, but I'd have to check with the Iowa Public Information Board if, you know, there's any problems with that, but, no, I mean, I, just my discussion notes remind me to talk about things, but. Um, but yeah, the entire PowerPoint presentation is on, um, the Iowa Public Information Board website under, um, uh, what's the heading? I, I think it's, uh, um, instruction, instructions or something like that.
Instruction.
Yeah. Actually, it's time to tell you, since we're all here. So. You're watching my inability of time. Training. So under training, Iowa sunshine law and Iowa sunshine laws two thousand sixteen PowerPoint.
Any other questions for Todd? Okay, thanks again, Todd. We do appreciate it. It, it actually should be reviewed. We should review this.
You know, and that was one of the things I was going to start with. I don't have a problem doing an annual.
I, I don't see anything wrong with my annual or annually.
You know, because I, like I mentioned earlier, I think it's, it's wise to, um, you know, refresh a person's understanding of those. Because oftentimes, you know, as I mentioned, communication does a lot with, um, you know, the perception that there's something, you know, that's being, being hidden or done, you know, behind the scenes type of thing. Um, you know, as, you know, if you can provide that communication, provide that, uh, you know, that, that ability for the, the public to, to know what's going on, you know, you're going to, you're going to resolve a lot. But, um, you know, oftentimes there are questions, and I have it many times from some of the elected officials and department heads. You know, I got this record request. Can I give it to them? You know, and that's why I kind of wanted to remind them that, you know, there's seventy-five things that can be considered confidential. You know, only a handful of them, maybe two handfuls, that would really apply to us. And so, you know, be familiar with that because, you know, there's oftentimes something that, you know, Tammy has the auditor's office I'm not familiar with. And when you'd mentioned a hundred thousand pages of drainage record, I don't even know what a drainage record consists of, you know, so.
It goes back to when it was originated.
Which, which, you know, may be, may be something that someone wants, but that communication to find out and the, um, you know, the, the, the information that you say, well, if you're wanting all a hundred thousand, it's going to take considerable amount of time to do that and staff time to do that, to compile those records. So this is going to be the estimated cost because of this, you know? One employee over the course of this amount of time, you know, minus the things that can't be considered part of the, the actual cost, um, to find out if that's what they really want. But, yeah, you know, other than, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I can't really speak because there's a lot of different cases that, that could apply, but I would venture a guess that most people don't want a hundred thousand pages of records.
Well, the only other issue I had is one, oh, this is before you guys were ever on. We had somebody that went into the drainage room and just walked in there because it wasn't locked and started going through and taking files out and looking through files without anybody.
Has to be a request.
It has, they have to come and ask before they go in. And his point was, it's my records. No, it's the county's records.
It's the drainage, it's the drainage district.
Yeah, it's, yeah, in those situations, but there has to be a request.
Right.
And they have to allow supervision in situations where, where supervision is necessary.
We had a little issue with that with one person and I think we got it right.
And I think I remember that situation. I think it was something that was brought to my attention too. But yeah, there has to be requests. Now, one thing is that I had a note in my thing to remember to say this is the request, we can't demand that they be here in person. So in other words, uh, you know, someone calls us up, he says, I want the dissent to, you know, and if it's complicated, I mentioned, hey, can you kind of email me that so I know exactly? But they do not have to request it in person. They can do it by email, mail, whatever. And we get, I get record requests, uh, it's always interesting because usually people from outside of the state or, or, you know, some part of the United States that's far away will always say, under the Freedom of Information Act, which is not applicable because we are not the federal government, which is only applicable to the federal government. But you do have the right to public records, which is chapter twenty-two of our, of our Iowa code. So, um, but, you know, they always say that. So when someone says, hey, under Freedom of Information, you know, okay, fine. You know, only an attorney would find that to be, um, interesting, you know? But, uh, yeah, so they, yeah.
Minor details.
Yeah, those, those, those interesting nuances. But, you know, the, the reality is, um, I think in, in looking over the last uh, couple of years, um, the part that, that probably generated some of the complaints was just not the communication. That communication solves a lot in a lot of different situations, not just the sunshine laws. You know, it's, uh, communication is, is, um, important, you know, just so that there's a firm understanding and not a misunderstanding, but.
Yeah, no, I think it's very important, especially for newly elected officials to have this briefing or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, this is the very first time I've done it, so, you know, there's little hiccups here and there. Uh, but I think.
I thought it was very good.
It would be wise.
I didn't realize that was your first time.
Yeah.
So that's.
No, you are the first, is, uh, you know, so you're newly elected supervisors, again, welcome, but also having done it for any of the board's briefs, and we've talked about it. We've had situations where I've, I've given advice on certain areas of the sunshine laws, but never presented a complete overview of it. And, you know, I can't, uh, can't take any credit for that PowerPoint. It was well done and that Public Information Board, who is the board that is the, you know, the aid, or is the board that, that, you know, is, is in the know or has all of the information regarding that? Couldn't have done it any better and, and it's a wonderful resource. Um, but, uh, um, yeah, I, I do agree. I do agree that this would be something that on an annual basis would be nice, not just for you guys, but for the other, um, elected officials and department heads because we're all impacted. You know, mine is, my office is probably not as impacted as others because most people understand a lot of what I do is confidential. But, you know, with that being said, I still, uh, work closely with all of the departments in, in situations where a complaint is, is issued and, um, communication with the Iowa Public Information Board. And, um, most of the time, you know, my, my response is on behalf of the, um, the person that I'm representing or the entity that I'm representing is, well, tell me what happened. You know, and it's, it's largely networked, so. But I appreciated the opportunity, guys, and, um, you know, if you want me to do it annually, just let me know.
I kind of think every, be a.
Definitely after, after an election.
Yeah, every four years or every two years, actually.
Yeah, every two years. Uh, early on in the year, because, you know, there, there's some information I got today that, you know, I probably could have had some questions from people a little bit differently had I known, you know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, annually is probably too often, but every two years.
Every two years.
So, you know, we just got done with an election, so if we do it in two years, it.
Yeah, you'll have two more new supervisors to educate.
Yeah, well.
Probably.
That'll be, that'll be good. And, um, you know, we'll, uh, because ultimately, and I've said it many times, you know, my goal is to make everything as transparent as possible. And I know that's, you know, oftentimes yours too. And so, uh, it's, uh, you know, it's important that, uh, we do everything we can to make sure that happens. And, uh, I think to a large extent, you know, when there's controversy or, or, um, negative, uh, negative things that are said about, uh, government, a lot of it has to do with the fact that they, they're not, uh, they're not getting the information or they're not, uh, they're not feeling that they're part of government or they don't know, you know, why they're deciding things the way they do. And I'm not just talking about local. I'm, I'm pretty much saying federal government, you know, and looking at it from the standpoint how much contention there is out there between the, the, the political parties and that type of thing and accusations flying. If the people feel that they're part of it and they're informed, um, oftentimes they can accept something they don't necessarily agree with as far as a decision being made as long as they knew that they're part of the process, you know, and, and I think that's important. I say oftentimes, not always, but. So.
I will get you a.
Perfect.
Todd, is that your quote of Iowa book there?
It is. I brought the actual law just in case.
I figured.
Yeah, thanks, Todd.
Thanks.
We are up to time with our auditor.
Okay, next week's agenda, we have approved cigarette permits for a Bay of Iowa and Spring Valley Gulf Course. We have our budget amendment hearing and to approve a resolution for the budget amendment. And we have a joint teleconference with Winnebago County, um, for a public hearing on approval of the updated reclassification of Florida NWK sixty-eight dash one thirty-six main open ditch and lateral three pole ditch. And that's it for next week so far.
Maybe we will.
Yeah, I had, I don't have that written up yet, I'm sure. But yes, hopefully that also. And then I don't, uh, think I have anything else.
Sure.
I, uh, attended the, um, initial kickoff for the Sioux County Hazard Mitigation Planning at the E and A Building. Um, just kind of went through the initial information gathering, um, just kind of discussing what the process is going forward on, you know, spelling out what's all going to be in the plan and, you know, just basically just an introductory, an introductory meeting. But there was a lot of good information discussed and, and shared. Um, some of the people will do, that are in there have experience with, you know, hazard mitigation planning and stuff like that, so it'll be interesting.
Mr. Stecker?
Um, I did not have any meetings this week, but we have an EMS meeting scheduled for tonight. Bill sent out an email yesterday about that. The main purpose of the meeting is to review the agreement between the county and the cities for asset transfer, but we have not received a final document from Todd even as of now. So I'm going to try and visit with him right after the meeting and see if he's going to have that. Otherwise, I don't know if we will actually have the meeting or if we'll cancel it, but, um, that's really the only thing that I think is kind of planned. From the discussion this morning during public discussion and the conversations during the ordinance discussion, I guess I would bring up to the board, um, there's been decisions, actions, whatever, that have been taken by current and previous members of the board that anyone could criticize at any point in time, but seems like anything that someone has an issue with me continuously gets brought up in the board meeting and we rehash things over and over. I guess I, I don't feel that's completely appropriate for a boardroom, for business conversations. So I would like some thoughts on that because there's, there's obviously a lot of other situations that could be rehashed time and time again that aren't.
Don't disagree with you totally, but the problem is you don't know what somebody's going to say until they say it.
Well, they could be asked after that statement to refrain, refrain from repeating things and keep their comments respectful and professional. Would be my suggestion.
I would say especially during the actual agenda item being public definitely as just.
I just.
They don't really have a right to talk. I mean, we let them, of course, that's fine, but, you know.
Open comments, I mean, we, we.
Public comment, I don't, you know.
We have never restricted anything on that.
Yeah. During the meeting is one thing, public comments is kind of another.
Public comments is.
But it would be good to, I, I, no, I, I understand it does happen during the meeting too. It would be good to maybe regulate some of that too.
I mean, the, the number of times the trip to DC has been brought up is probably almost in the double digits by now.
That, that was a little, that was not pertaining to anything we're discussing today.
No, there's, there's, there's a lot of places.
Pertain to anything we were talking about.
There's a lot of places X number of dollars could be discussed. I, I'm not even going to get into the specifics of this comment, but, um, that's a, that opens up a big can of worms and I don't know if we should go down that path, but if we do, we do.
Yeah, I, I, and, and, you know, I can say that gentleman that made the comment that we gave, uh, raises of a hundred thousand dollars last year, you know, is that, has anything to do with what we're talking about?
It doesn't, and that's, that's why.
No, it has nothing to do with it.
That's, that's why I bring this up because.
Should that enter into our decision? No. But did he have a right to say it? I think he did.
That was, that was the first time that comment has been brought up in the boardroom. So that's, that's one point of discussion, but my point is there's been specific items that have brought, been brought up consistently and repeatedly that should not be repeated on a daily basis.
I don't, I don't know how to stop people from, from saying it. Because it's a public, right back to what Todd just got done saying, yes. Public and they have the right to say what they want to say most of the time.
During public comment. So if, if no one wants to change how it's handled, I guess that will change how I present information because I get conversations from constituents and citizens even outside my district on a regular basis, but they don't always come up in the boardroom.
Anything else?
Nope.
I went to the NIACOG meeting last night. There's a possibility that there's going to be some funding for home repair. It'll come out in June, and so if I find out anything, I'll bring it to the board for consideration. That's a possibility. It's not a fact yet. Uh, we okayed the transportation planning work program for the twenty-four year, fiscal year twenty-four. Um, quite a bit of that is done by the county engineers. And it's also, some of the state programs are discussed, like improve, uh, improvement on the road between here and Garner. There is a nonprofit childcare grant that's available for ten thousand dollars in case anybody in the county has a want or a need for childcare and wants to get a grant for planning. Uh, there is a grant for ten thousand dollars through NIACOG.
Is that for like starting up a daycare?
Right, it's to do planning and informational, because that's something, there's never been a grant before to do any of the preliminary work for childcare.
That's definitely a hurdle.
Yeah, so there is that available. We talked about the funding for transit and that comes through, uh, two point nine eight four oh six two six four for new vehicle. Or when you pay your taxes on a vehicle that you buy, new or used, they take that much money out of it and that's how it goes to public transit. And for our district is, uh, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. And we get two million one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars from federal assistance for transit. We applied for a grant. We applied for a grant to build a garage in Forest City to house the transportation that's there. Highly unlikely that we'll get it, but we applied anyhow. The money is very limited, I think there's a million dollars in the whole state, so I doubt that we get half of it. And. That's probably all the highlights for the meeting. Anything else the board has? Nothing? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Long paper say aye?
Aye.
Post.